Thank you, everybody, for your indulgence. I'm sorry we ran a little bit over in our closed session, but I'm calling us back to order now, and I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Joe Adrian Morales, a Law Academy student at Hiram Johnson High School. Adrian?
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adrian, will you stay there? Member Coffin?
Yes, I am so proud to give this award to Adrian. Adrian also has to go very quickly out of here because tonight is the graduation for the Law Academy, which he's graduating from, from Hiram Johnson. So here is Joe Adrian Morales. He came to Hiram Johnson High School his junior year. He's been interested in becoming a law enforcement officer for the past eight years, and he has watched his older siblings constantly going in and out of jail and encountering the police. Sorry to hear that. Observing this as a child may sway some youngsters away from the police, but Adrian is not the normal student. Instead of pushing away from law enforcement, he embraced it. He knew what his siblings were doing was wrong, and he wanted to do the right thing. This young man has faced several trials and tribulations in his young life. He has not seen his biological father in a very long time, and he lost his mother in 2010. Before she passed, he promised her that he would become a police officer. At a point in time, they lived in San Luis Obispo, and he joined the Cadet Academy there. In 2016, he moved to Sacramento. Adrian joined the Sacramento Police Department Magnet Academy at Hiram Johnson High School in 2016 and has never looked back. He quickly made an impact by winning a gold medal in the Regional Skills USA Competition in 2016, held in Sacramento. He unfortunately was not able to attend the state competition that year. In April of 2017, he attended the state competition and, in his typical fashion, won a gold medal. Adrian has professional goals and is steadfastly working to accomplish those goals. In late June, he will be competing on the national stage against students across the country in the field of criminal justice. Last semester, he held a GPA of 3.5. He proudly represents Hiram Johnson High School, the Sacramento City Unified School District, as well as the Sacramento Police Department. He is on the path to be very successful in his future. I congratulate you, and I wish you the best of luck in Kentucky. Would you like to say something?
So I would like to say thank you to everyone who found me here tonight. You know, a great night tonight. I'm graduating from Law Academy right now in Hiram Johnson. You know, I'm thankful that I'm here tonight, receiving this, you know, this thing from everyone from the district. You know, I really appreciate it. You know, thank you all again.
Adrian, I just wanted to say that you're a role model for children everywhere, all of our students, and I think, I hope that after, excuse me, after you've completed your education, you'd seem fit, see it fit to return to Sacramento to help make our communities and streets safer. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, sorry about that, guys, but that's, you know, one of my goals is to become a police officer. Like I say, you know, I didn't grow up, you know, as a young kid, you know, actually seeing my brothers growing, going to college, and instead, you know, they actually failed to go to school, you know, and actually, you know, didn't even graduate from high school. And I seen, you know, my brothers, you know, with drugs and stuff like that, that encouraged me. Instead, I seen raids coming in my house, you know, SWAT team and stuff like that. That actually encouraged me a lot. And ever since, you know, I met the police officer at San Antonio Police Department, and there we used to talk a lot. And he became my mentor, you know, one of my best mentors, actually. Ever since then, you know, I knew that I wanted to be a police officer. Now that I have a chance, you know, I want to take that chance and actually, you know, serve my community also and, you know, give back to the young people of the community also.
I see you, I see you not only serving our community, I see you as a future mentor to students who are coming behind you.
Yeah, and that's one of my goals also, you know. You know, now that I graduated from high school, I want to make sure I leave a path for other students and train other, you know, young cadets that want to also pursue this career. And to, you know, of what I learn, I want to pass down to them, make sure they also learn, you know, what I learn, and make sure they make it to Kentucky also one of these years after I leave Hiram Johnson.
Thank you. Chris, Member Bridget?
Thank you, Member Wu. I just have one question for you. What time is your graduation at?
It actually started at six. It's now, they have called me multiple times to start heading over there because I'm actually late.
Just make sure that you drive the speed limit, okay?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
You're welcome.
Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Yes, Mr. President, pro tem. By a vote of five to zero, with Board members President Hanson and Vice President Ryan Absin, approved a settlement in OEH case number 2017-020162. That concludes the announcements out of closed session, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, time for a special presentation, 7.1, Gate Certificate Recognition. Kari Hanson-Smith.
Wait just a second as everybody gets up here with me. All right. Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Bonda, Vice President Wu, and members of the Board. My name is Kari Hanson-Smith, and I'm the District Coordinator for Gifted Education and Advanced Placement Programs. I'm joined this evening by Sarah Schnack, our Gate Resource Teacher, and our recipients. Thank you for this evening's opportunity to recognize the dedication and commitment of these educators, who, over the course of the last two years, participated in a minimum of 30 hours of professional learning, a few even finished it all in the last year. This work focused on the unique social and emotional characteristics and needs of our district's diverse gifted learners, and the high-leverage differentiation strategies that are proven to meet the needs of all learners in our diverse classrooms. This course of study culminated in practical, current classroom application through the development of an original differentiated unit of study. I'm inspired by the dedication of these experienced educators to increasing the rigor of student learning, to raising the level of student engagement, and increasing the depth and complexity with which students engage in content. Their classrooms are vibrant, active, rigorous learning environments, where students meet academic challenge with a sense of adventure and collaboration. This year, we are delighted to announce that 33 teachers have completed certification in this year's cohort. Tonight, I'd like to recognize those who were able to be present, and at least name those who were not able to join us. From John Bidwell, Alexandra Guerrero; from Bowling Green-McCoy, Tindoe Hong; from Camelia Basic, Nicole Bridham; May Herr, Kim Nguyen, and Rebecca Stone; from David Lubin, Karna Catalan; Tracy Hanson; Bridget Leiden McGrath; Kim Polo, Alicia Sandals, and Mary Ann Williams; from Hollywood Park, Kim Aaronholt; Shannon Bliss; Rachel Bridges; Anna Lisa Collins; Jennifer Crawford; Laura Harvey; Cindy Johnson; BB LaGuana; Elise Leon; Lisa Manna; from Matsuyama, Tara Nylander; from Martin Luther King, Beth Garland, and Mabel G; from New Joseph Bonheim, Sandra Enriquez, and Rebecca Van Nest; from Peter Burnett, Robert Cross; from Phoebe Hurst, Adrian Davis, and Dorothy Ramon Martinez; from Pony Express, Patty Howard; from Theodore Judah, Tony Duke, and Claudia Pineda Wong. Join me in congratulating them in this effort. And we might need to make two rows. Yeah, scooch, scooch. Make two sideways. There we go. Two rows. There we go. All right. All right, thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for your dedication to our students, our children, and for our future scholars. Item 7.2, Seal of Biliteracy Recognition. Vanessa Gerard. Oh, do we have public comment on that? Sorry.
Darlene Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you, Board Superintendent and Board President and other Honorable Board Members. This is a question of how we actually utilize our resources. I remember the last time we honored 10 gate teachers, and I wanted to know, how do those gate teachers help support the failing students in our district? We have a district of 70% poverty, and we cannot say how that support is given from gate teachers to the rest of the teachers, who are not successful with students. Let's say, where does the money come from to train these teachers? Comes out of the general fund. How does the general fund money support all children? Well, we can't say how it supports students who are not gate, but we can actually congratulate all those teachers who went through the process and who have been going through the process for several years. They worked with gate students. Well, let's talk about students in special ed, who may be gifted, who are not gate. And we can't even talk about the failure rate in this district, but we cannot talk about, really, is how we utilize our resources. We have some excellent resources that are not shared amongst everyone, and we have a seriousness of failure in this district for most children. It really has to do with governance. It has to do with structure, and I asked at the CAC meeting, how can we get the gate teachers involved in the oversight of what's happening with the failing students? Guess what the response was? I just don't know how we would make that happen. Well, if you use money, then you need to figure out how it benefits all children. And right now, we are in a serious crisis about who is not being successful. When you go to school for 12 years in this district and you get an F the whole time, and you come out, I don't know what the expectation is, but the city has an expectation of incarceration. And we know that our kids are dying on the street. So I want to know how this district is going to better utilize all those resources that are generated from those kids who are below poverty. How are you going to affect their ability to learn? And I think that it's going to take a conversation with all the people who are benefiting with the resources that they're getting paid on.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 7.2, Seal of Biliteracy.
Good evening, Vice President Wu, members of the Board, and Mr. Bonda. My name is Vanessa Gerard. I'm the Director of Multilingual Literacy, and I have the honor tonight of sharing with you the recipients of the Seal of Biliteracy. The California State Seal of Biliteracy is an award created by the State of California and given to graduating high school students who have attained high levels of proficiency in English and in one or more other languages. These students met or exceeded the English Language Arts Standards on the CASP test and show competency in a world language through high school coursework, testing through the AP or IB programs, or by passing a state-approved test in a target language. This test includes reading, writing, speaking, and listening. The Sacramento City Unified School District has been expanding this program since its inception four years ago. This year, the language testing sessions provided by the district hosted more than 160 students, many of whom were English learners who tested in their home language. For 2016-17, we had 207 students pre-qualify for the SEAL and another 95 passed the state-approved test, for a total of 302 Seal of Biliteracy students. In addition to receiving the recognition tonight, the recipients of this award also receive acknowledgement through the State of California, which bestows upon them golden seals for their high school diplomas. This award will also be noted on their transcripts, a verification that will identify them as biliterate, a huge asset in the 21st century global market. We'd like to take a moment to thank the parents, teachers, administrators, and also our contacts at each school who helped us to coordinate the Seal of Biliteracy. I'd now like to introduce the Sac City recipients who are able to come before the Board this evening. We have, students, if you would just take a step forward so everybody knows who you are, okay? Kylie Wong, from CK McClatchy, Japanese. Olivia Sisun, CK McClatchy, French. Geraldine Castaneda, CK McClatchy, German. Lena Camille, CK McClatchy, French. Annie Jimenez, CK McClatchy, Spanish. Alma Rodriguez, Arthur A. Benjamin Health Professions, Spanish. Angelita Nambu, JFK, Spanish. Soshi Montes, Hiram Johnson, Spanish. Yasmin Isla Chavez, CK McClatchy, Spanish. Jocelyn Romo Gutierrez, CK McClatchy, Spanish. Jose Perez, CK McClatchy, Spanish. Amani Pierre Bagdir, CK McClatchy, German. Jovian Lin, John F. Kennedy, Chinese. Kiana Lee, John F. Kennedy, French. Kenji Fong, John F. Kennedy, Latin. Eve Greenlow, John F. Kennedy, Spanish. Liliana Mercado, The Met, Spanish. Amy Velasco Torres, West Campus, Spanish. Kevin Gomez, CK McClatchy High School, Spanish. Alejandra Godinez Motzuma, CK McClatchy, Spanish. Milan Neprah, West Campus, French. Clarice Scott, West Campus, Spanish. Alexa Mark, John F. Kennedy, Latin. Uing Do Tran, SES, Vietnamese. Natalie Rosas, CK McClatchy, Spanish. So thank you very much for allowing us to come before you and share this wonderful honor. We appreciate it.
Congratulations, all. Member Bridget?
I just wanted to congratulate you all on your hard work. I know that this is probably not an easy road to go, so just, I wish you good luck on your future adventures. I did have a question for Vanessa. Can you tell me how many schools were not able to make it out tonight? Because I know that there were some senior awards night.
There were, particularly Rosemont. Yes, Rosemont was not able to send anybody. I'm sorry I didn't look to see all the schools that were not represented. I only looked at the ones that were represented. I'd be glad to get that information, too.
That would be great. Maybe if you can have staff send it out in a B.C. to us, so...
I'd be glad to do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Picture time.
Go around to the front, guys.
Huge, huge accomplishment. Item, are there any public comments? Alex?
We have 21 public comments.
On this item?
Oh, on this item, no. Sorry. No public comment.
Thank you. It scared me. Item 7.3, 2017 California School Recognition Awards, Gold Ribbon, Green Ribbon. Superintendent Bonda, Kathy Allen, Mary Harden Young, and two carousers.
Come on up. Last night at the 2017 California School Recognition Program, our district received five outstanding awards, and we'd like to acknowledge those awards tonight. The 2017 Civic Learning Award celebrates public schools' efforts to engage students in civic learning. The awards went to Arthur A. Benjamin Health Professions High School and Leonardo da Vinci K8 School. Congratulations to both of these outstanding schools for their work in civic education. Our district was also honored with a Green Ribbon School Program Award and two Gold Ribbon School Awards. I'd like to call up Rachel King, our Project Green Specialist. And we do have Mary Harden Young here, representing Cal Middle. And then is Jim Hayes?
Jim's in the mat.
Jim, come on up. Jim Hayes, Principal of School of Engineering and Sciences, to share the practice that was highlighted in their award.
Good evening, Superintendent Bonda, Vice President Wu, and members of the Board. As Superintendent Bonda mentioned, my name is Rachel King. I'm the Project Green Specialist for the district. I'm here on behalf of the Green Ribbon Award that we received. This year, we received a California Green Ribbon Award Gold Level for 2017. This is our third consecutive year winning this award. This is part of the National U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Award, so this is the state program that represents that program. I don't have a whole team of people like the rest of the awards you saw tonight, but I do want to emphasize that this is a district-level award. So it is not an award that I accomplished myself, but with all of the various programs that we have here throughout the district. So some of the programs I'd like to highlight are based on the various pillars that make up the program application. Pillar one is resource efficiency. Programs that we do in facilities, like energy conservation and irrigation improvement projects we've made, programs like Prop 39, where we make facilities improvement projects, our facilities improvements to our schools. The second pillar is health and wellness. Programs like our food literacy program that we have in multiple schools throughout the district, as well as our district wellness committee, are highly represented in this category. And then the third pillar is environmental and sustainability education. So programs that are highlighted in this category are Green Week, that you guys adopted last fall, as well as Project Green and our Growing Together Garden Curriculum. So it's a compilation of all of these efforts throughout the district, and many, many more that I did not mention that have received us this award tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Egan, the principal of Cal Middle School, could not join us tonight. She's actually feeding her PTSA board to honor parents for their year of service. So she sent the following and asked for me to read it. "Cal's application for the Gold Ribbon Award focused on our inclusive practice model. The thrust of our application was that students in these classes markedly improved their academic achievement levels, not just the special education students, but all of the students, including traditionally underperforming groups, made notable gains. In essence, this program is helping to close the achievement gap. A secondary suggestion of our application was that the inclusive practices model not only directly impacts the performance and achievement of students physically sitting in these co-taught classrooms, but the school as a whole. The importance of students being included rather than excluded is part of what makes Cal great. Kids are accepted here and feel part of our community, regardless of their labels. Our SIC program supports this effort in that we, as a staff, try to reward students for doing the right things, being safe, showing integrity, and being considerate, rather than calling them out for what they are doing wrong. This notion works hand in hand with the desire to include students and meet their individual needs within the regular education classroom."
Thank you. Jim? Oh, excuse me. Principal Hayes?
Jim is fine. Jim is fine. Good evening, Superintendent Bonda and the Sacramento City Board of Education. I am Jim Hayes, and I'm the proud principal of the School of Engineering and Sciences. This California Gold Ribbon Award and recognition is a fantastic validation of a lot of hard work by a lot of different stakeholders. I'd like to thank the district for their support of our school, the parents for being a partner in their child's education, the students themselves for giving their best effort always, and the awesome staff at SES, which is incredibly hard-working and collaborative group of educators. It is a privilege to work with all of you for the betterment of the youth that we serve. We won this award for our linked learning approach to education. This approach is based on the idea that students work harder and dream bigger if their education is relevant to them. The linked learning approach integrates rigorous academics that meet college-ready standards with sequenced, high-quality, career-technical education, work-based learning, and supports to help students stay on track. For our kids, education is organized around industry-sector themes. The industry theme is woven into lessons taught by teachers who collaborate across subject areas with input from working professionals and reinforced by work-based learning with real employers. This makes learning more like the real world of work and helps students answer the question, why do I need to know this? Linked learning exposes our students to previously unimagined college and career opportunities by turning their education into a personally relevant, engaging experience. by turning their education into a personally relevant, engaging experience. This approach to education is creating a disciplined, prepared, and productive future workforce, ready to succeed in college, career, and life. Lastly, I'd like to say 275 schools received this honor statewide out of a possible 477 that made the initial test score criteria. Eighty-seven out of those 275 schools are Title I schools. What this means is 31% of the award winners are Title I schools, which makes it all that much more impressive for us as a community as we fall into that group. It is the piece of this award that I am actually the most proud of. It is why we get into education in the first place, to make a difference in the lives of young people. I am so very proud of this accomplishment for our big little school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Member Pritchett and thank you to Second Vice President Wu for attending the award ceremony with us last night and showing your signs of support. And then also want to give a great big shout-out to the School of Engineering and Sciences staff who is here. So, if you all would stand up. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have, do we have a comment?
One public comment. Darlene Anderson.
Hi, good evening. I want to say that SES was a great opportunity to understand how much parents' involvement makes a difference when your child has a disability. It was a small enough environment where I could engineer having IEPs, but the best teacher over there was Casey Go. She's not here tonight, but she went from, she helped my student from Science and Engineering, from not being able to write and read at all, to above proficient. And that made a difference. And I'm saying that it's important to have a small enough environment to work with all kids. And it's unfortunate that all kids don't get into specialized or specialty programs. But I think that we need to work harder to ensure that kids are making it. And then we need to understand who's not making it and why. So, there are a lot of kids who went through SES who didn't make it. But I would like the district to know some of those concept ideals and understand what's happening in the district. We have a small number of very efficient programs that are working, but they don't work for all kids. We don't do enough for the rest of the kids. And so, I would think that that would be the board's responsibility to work with the district to figure out, what can we do to be ensuring that more kids have opportunity? And I just mean basic opportunity. And so, I'd like to thank the current principal. He helped me through the last year of Science and Engineering. It was wonderful working with him because he was not so resistant. But I have had resistance. But I can say that, you know, I'm very proud of my son. And I'm proud of the working atmosphere at Science and Engineering and proud that I had the ability to navigate the educational process at SES. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Barrios, any other question? Any other comments?
No other public comment.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and congratulations. Thank you. Before we move on to a public comment, Ms. Rosas, would you like to read the statement, please?
Thank you. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, June 4th, at 9:00 a.m., Monday, June 5th, at 6:00 p.m., and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please fill out a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative prior to the conclusion of the items presented. Please also speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do speak on a comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your phones or cellphones or place them on silent or vibrate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8.0, public comment. Mr. Barrios, do we have any public comment today?
Yeah, we have 22 public comments, 16 on expanded learning programs, and six that are general comments.
Okay.
First public comment, if you could come up in threes, please. Imani Lucas, Melissa Bordeaux, and Britt Erby. Okay. Moving on to late, Jayla Shields.
Good evening, members of the board. The education system is basically set up for us to earn a grade and not actually earn life skills like checking accounts or owning houses. They're set up for us to learn what is common core and what's required for us to succeed to the next level of education. And the only opportunity for us to learn those life skills are in after-school programs. We earn responsibility. We learn how to do public speaking. We get better organization skills. We get leadership qualities, all from after-school programs. After-school programs, such as the one that we are all affiliated with, Be Mad, allows the students to voice their opinions and actually make positive changes in their environments. And since the students are the future, programs that allow them to better prepare themselves for the future are like entirely worth it. And if I could personally fund those programs that allow the future to better prepare themselves for the future, then I would give every dollar that I could. But I can't. So, since you all do, I hope that you all do that. Some of you actually did attend the Be Mad meeting that we had, that we held last Thursday, and our main focus was the prosperity of the Black community in terms of education. And once again, we cannot reach those goals without the help of you. So, I hope that you all take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you do me the honor of identifying who you are, right here? Identifying yourself as well as your colleagues.
My name is Melissa Bordeaux. I'm a Be Mad student at John F. Kennedy. This is Destiny, a Be Mad student at Burbank. Anjali and Jalen. We're all Be Mad students.
Also at Kennedy or?
They're at Burbank.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to get, that information. Thank you.
President, my light's on.
Yes.
Hi, Melissa. Would you give a definition of Be Mad for people who don't really know what the organization is and what your goals are?
Okay. Be Mad is basically a program. Be Mad stands for Blacks Making a Difference. We are a group of students. We're at three different campuses, John F. Kennedy, Luther Burbank, and Hiram Johnson. And basically, we come together and we work within our community to bring everyone together and help the youth better understand the purpose of education. And we help to get them on track and work with us to better prepare all of us for our future and like hopefully get the Black community back on track into being successful as they should.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jayla, a current graduating student at Luther Burbank. And I wanted to address why do the staff and everybody at Burbank like won't let us know? I want to explain that. Okay, so currently at Burbank, they want us to graduate, but they don't give us the requirements on time. They'll like let us know late. So, like for me, I didn't know that I wasn't going to be able to walk the stage until I had checked in and they weren't going to tell me I had to check in myself personally to find out that because I was missing a couple of classes that I wouldn't be able to walk. And I wanted to know why do they tell students so late or won't tell them until it's almost time to go? Because I graduate in two weeks.
Thank you. We'll look into that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anjali Johnson. I am currently a junior at Hiram Johnson, and I am here to talk about, I'm here to talk about seventh period as well. First off, my freshman year, I was at Independent Studies, and I wasn't doing so well. So, I tried to go to a regular high school and see how it worked. At first, I was basically just being a kid, you know, like hanging out, just trying to find my crowd, worried about everything else but what I was supposed to be worried about. And then I got involved with the program, Be Mad. And with Be Mad, before Be Mad, I wasn't thinking about college. I wasn't, I really, that wasn't really on my mind. But with Be Mad, I met Marion and Jody. And I told them when I first seen, when I first really started talking to them about college, I told them I didn't think I was likely to graduate because of my grades. And Jody and Marion worked with me and showed me that if I do better, it wasn't too late, that I could actually graduate. And right now, I am, all my grades are actually really well. I don't have any failing grades. My lowest grade is a C. And without Be Mad, I wouldn't be here. Like I wouldn't be at this point that I'm at right now. I would probably still be worried about going to a party or, you know, like I wouldn't actually have the motivation because these teachers, they actually reach out to us and listen to us, listen to what we have to say, and incorporate our ideas with what is going to, what we're going to do. Say, if we have an activity, they listen to us. They ask us what we want to do and actually put our ideas, put our ideas to work with what the situation that we're working with. For instance, we went to Davis, and there was a few workshops there. And in those workshops, we were able to learn about our roots and where we came from. And we were able to choose what we, it's not, it's not just, oh, mainly solely focused on Blacks, it's not just about the Black community. It's also about getting your education. They're all about our education. Like, that's what Be Mad is about. And with, without, I'm sorry, I'm repetitive. Without this program, I wouldn't be where I am. And I feel like if you guys take it out, a lot of the students who are doing, being successful right now will most likely not.
Thank you. Member Kaufman?
With this group, Melissa? Okay, I'd like to say something to all of you if you can stay just for a moment. So, I had the pleasure of attending the Be Mad meeting, and I left there inspired and in awe of the power and the intelligence of the students. It is so hard to make social change. And when you see it happening in young people from the grassroots level, basically, at school, you are the students in the classroom, is incredibly inspiring. So, we are facing some problems with our budget and after-school programs. And I understand that you are here tonight to advocate for your program so you do not lose this opportunity. I'd like to suggest one thing. I know that I will be fighting for you, and I'm sure that most of my other colleagues up here will be as well. But I would like you to go back to the people who are helping you, the adults who are helping you, and put together an actual board presentation, which means you will intricately explain your program, how you've become such a success on multi-campus, the impact it has had on individuals to make life-changing choices about taking school seriously and doing as well as you can in your classes. I would be happy to be the advocate for that here at the district level. And I'd like someone to come take my card, and I'd like to hopefully be contacted within a week or two to figure out whether that presentation is before the end of the school or if it's the first thing for the next school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Your support is greatly appreciated. I have all of your contact information, and I'll definitely be contacting all of you with, actually, within the next few days. It does not take a week. We'll definitely get that out to you soon.
If those are cards of support, you may give them to our communications director. I have a few up here already.
Wait, wait, wait. You missed some.
Well, the rubber band broke.
Good evening, board members. My name is, and Superintendent Banda, my name is Britt Erby. I'm a parent here with students at CK McClellan and William Lane Elementary School. For some of you may know, I also was able to be a part of the youth development team over the expanded learning programs a few years back. I'm here to talk about after-school, before-school, and summer programming. As you know, we came in May 4th and had heard the presentation and heard the news about some of the grants not being refunded. And you responded, both in what you shared and also in action. It looks as though about a fourth of the gap in funding has been allocated now to protect some of those programs. So, I'm back again, as are several other in the audience, to talk about fully funding that gap for the grant that was not refunded. So, the one-fourth makes a difference, but it won't result in, ultimately, there will still be doors that are closed, right? The before-school programs at William Lane Elementary will go away, period, be gone. School starts at 9:00. So, for those of us that are working parents, we need the before-school programs. Our summer programs here not only engage young people, but they feed the community. Every single program is a feeding site for any child 0 to 18. So, obviously, these are critical. I believe that you all support that. I want to highlight that many other districts, since transitioning, have had opportunity to work with other districts around expanded learning, and most don't have those grants. They use district funds, they use L cap dollars, and particularly, they use the supplemental concentration funds. We have 80% of the students in after-school programs are low-income students and families, 23% are English-language learners, and foster youth get automatic enrollment in any program they want to be in for after-school, summer, or before-school. So, it meets the criteria. So, the question then becomes, how else will those dollars be used? This impact disproportionately hits our lowest-income families. So, for that reason, I really want to encourage and push for that full funding. We can look at a sustainable means to continue funding later, but for this year, we can't close those doors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chau Vang, followed by Viling Kang and Toz Deep Singh.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Banda. My name is Chau Vang with Mong, with Mong Innovating Politics. I just want to first thank the board members and their staff for moving the agenda items with students and parents up. You know, as much as I think the parents want to stay here until 2:00 a.m. with you all, I think they, it's a school night. So, we really appreciate that. You know, before I started working with HIP, I ran after-school program, extended learning, in two different school districts for close to 10 years, so twin reverse and SAC unified. And in a lot of our programs, I've seen really positive outcomes in terms of the youth that come through our after-school programming, many of which come from poor communities of color. And, you know, now they are called university students, productive university students who are leaders at the universities that they're at. And it's just a testament to a lot of after-school programs that happen at all the school sites, right? Not just with the programs that I ran. But that being said, you know, just emphasizing the need for after-school program is so... that being said, you know, it's just emphasizing the need for after-school program is so, um, important, because it does impact the, uh, our most vulnerable community members and the, the populations that, um, live in these poor areas. So, um, this is really an opportunity for the school board members and the district to show our students that they really care and they want to provide that space after the classroom time for our students to learn, right? Many of our, um, for many of our English learners, they don't have a place to learn after their school day. And so after-school extended learning programs provide that opportunity for them. Um, so HIP is all, really here to support, um, the board to fully fund the three-point, uh, three-point-three million dollars. And, um, we're looking to your leadership to make sure that happens for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So real quickly, just want to make an announcement. Um, we want to get you out of here as soon as possible. We know there's a lot of speakers, so when you hear your name, please take a stand right behind the podium so that we can move you quickly. Um, next three speakers, please stand in line. Viling Kang, Tuzdeep Singh, Elijah Crane, followed by Elizabeth Esparza.
Hello.
All right. Moves up and down.
Hello, uh, my name is Yilang Gang. I'm a senior at Hiram Johnson High School. Uh, today I will, I, today I'll speak about how I, how we need and want this after-school assets program. Uh, first of all, uh, thing about me is that I am a dancer. I, I enroll in this, uh, seventh period of dance. Um, one thing about me is, I love, I love dance with all my heart. It's my passion. And then for you, for, to, to be able to dance is the way to express myself and show who I am as a person. And for me not to be able to express that is heartbreaking, because that's what I love. I don't want anyone to tell me that I can't do what I love. And also, uh, speaking beha- uh, behalf of some students, some students need this seventh period to be ca- catch up on, uh, catch up on classes they do need, such as A through G requirements required for high school. Some kid, uh, some students I know also really took that class really serious. The one thing you can't really change about how, if I wanted to dance, yet people needed it, uh, you can't really change the passion of how a person actually feels about that class. Uh, I really, really, like, need to express myself, yet I really want to express myself to you guys as if I was a person, because I love dancing. And that is my thing. I don't want to be told that I can't dance. And we need that. You can't stop the beat.
Hello, hello, can I go?
Yes.
Can I go? Okay. Um, hello, everybody. Thank you all for giving me an opportunity to stand over here in front of you all to s- re- to speak about the after-school program, program. My name is Tazdeep Singh, and I'm from the school of Hiram Johnson High School regarding, I'm here regarding the, um, limitation of budget for the after-school assets program. I'll begin by, um, discussing or talking about how does the program really affect me. I'm part of a dance team that's involved in the after-school program. It really, like, affects my life, because, um, about two years ago, I began, I began, I joined dance. I was like a really quiet kid. I mean, even I'm a quiet kid today, but I was like much more like quiet kid, like very shy kid and so on. Today, I mean, I got all of the courage to come here and speak in front, in front of you all, with all the respect, because of all the progress that has affected me a lot. Because of all the dance program and the as- assets, I've been greatly affected. I've been more show, socially active. There are a lot of people who really, like, affected me. I mean, I kind of like, really got, easily got affected by all the people, more like saying that whenever they say something, I really get affected. But now, I'm like, because of the asset program, I'm more capable of making my own choices. I'm more independent. I can take leadership roles, and I'm more understandable. I'm also like, basically capable of adapt- adapting to any situation quickly. I would say, like, please keep the program, because the reason is, it can, it can affect a lot of kids. It's more like saying this program, like, represents the school, and we represent the city, and the city represents the nation. It's kind of a long way, but it really does greatly affect us all. Please try to understand, and thank you for all the support.
Hello there. Uh, my name is Elijah Crane. I currently work at Assets at Hiram Johnson. I just got my history degree, bachelor's, at SAC State, and I'm entering our credential program. So you guys should see a little bit more of me in the future, hopefully. Um, you've heard a lot of spielers today, you know, about what assets means to students. But what you have to understand is that we have students not only like Adrian, who spoke before us. We have Yi, we have Taz, who all come before you. And assets makes a huge difference to a lot of the students. I, today, I, I talked to a student about the fact that he's bringing weed, and I have to talk him out of it. We have students getting shot. You walk into a school, you go to a neighborhood, you see what these kids are working with. Assets is a break in that time, when they're not being told what to do, when they're not have teachers telling them to be quiet, when they're not stressed about everything that's working against them, and they can actually have positive role models, hanging out with them. These students are my friends. They're not just students that I work with. There's immense positive change that comes from our program. And if we don't do something about this, then that's another thing they have to work against. I know that you guys are trying, but if I go to a restaurant, I ask for some food, and it's been an hour, and I ask the waitress what's on, and then they say the chef's trying, I'm gonna go somewhere else. We don't have that opportunity. We can't go anywhere else. This is where they are. If we don't make the change, then it's gonna be business as usual. We know that the system's not good right now. I know that you guys magically found a million. Hopefully, we can magically found, find the rest. Um, again, I'm not here to insult what we're doing right now, because I don't know you guys personally. But we need to do something about this, because these students that you see here before you from Assets, these are the cream of the crop. You don't see students like this typically, coming before you, introducing themselves, being able to speak publicly, and so formally and so intellectually as you do see today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Esparza, followed by Brett Quan and David Costanero.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, board members, and for everybody that attended here today. My name's Elizabeth Esparza. I'm a parent at Bret Hart, um, Elementary. These are my daughters Sabrina and Angelina Cortez. Um, a couple of years ago, I was given the opportunity to go back to school. Um, without this after-school programs that we, that I had, that I, that my children still attend, I wouldn't have been able to get my three associate's degrees and my two bachelor's degrees, and my four-point-oh, without that. My, thank you. And that goes to the opportunity that we're given, but without that, those hours of, of, not just babysitting, of support, of relationships that are being, um, constructed with my kids, right? From, I can remember my son, he's a junior now, um, Ms. Angela, when we were trying, we were trying to close eleven schools here, you know? The support that we got from her and the kids when they would cry and think about their school being closed, she had them. When my son, um, sorry. When my son transferred to Cal Meadow, and he experienced the suspension, or the things that happened to a lot of our kids out here. And, um, and the support that he needed was given by Ms. Pauline, right? Um, those things don't come out of nowhere. Um, a lot of these kids, like they, it was mentioned before, they have an environment where there's, you can't walk to the store, right? Because you're gonna be shot. Um, you don't have food at home, there's abuse, whatever it is, those hours are a haven. They feed them, they're in a safe environment, and when they go home, they could go home and go to sleep. It's about that time. But without those four hours, we don't have any kind of, uh, YMCA where all our kids could go. I mean, there's a YMCA, but I can't afford it. So please don't cut this. I know it's not on you. But we really need to join in and fight for these kids. Thank you.
Brett Quan, followed by David Costanero and Charlene Seballos.
Good evening, uh, Superintendent Banda and members of the board. My name is Brad Quan, and I'm a proud father of, uh, three children, two of which attend the Mandarin Immersion Program at William Land Elementary. Um, here to talk about tonight, about the expanded learning programs and the, the funding. Uh, we live in the Thomas, and we work in the Thomas. And we chose to, uh, endure the commute every day to come to, uh, out of district, to, uh, for the school district, not only for the Mandarin Immersion Program, but also for the availability of the, uh, after-school and before-school programming. Um, with the lack of funding, it's gonna impact not only our family, but a number of families, uh, throughout the, the, uh, the district for that. Uh, simply, uh, because we look at it as a form of daycare and, and, uh, for our, uh, that. And also to, uh, the expanded learning and the opportunities that they get with the enrichment programs that they have. They're also building great relationships with the, with the awesome, uh, staff and the, the service providers that they have for that. So, uh, we urge you and the leadership to, um, explore options to, um, find the funding to allow this to happen. The Warriors were down twenty, twenty-plus points on game one of the last series, but they came back and won. Sacramento almost lost, uh, their basketball stadium, but their leadership were able to provide funding and explore ideas to create the Golden One Center, if you haven't been there. So I think we can be creative, and I urge you to find ways to, uh, uh, find some sources of funding to continue the programs. Thanks for your time.
David Costanero.
Good evening. Uh, my name's David Costanzio. I am the program manager for the William Land Expanded Learning Program. Uh, currently, we serve, um, about two-hundred-and-seventy-three kids after-school. Uh, next year, we're slated to have eighty-five spots. Um, we already had a registration night for next year for parents interested, and we received over two-hundred-and-fifty applications, um, for, uh, next year. So again, I, as, as some people have shared, I am appreciative of the funding that has been identified. Um, but with that, it's, it's simply just not enough to fun, to fully fund, uh, the need of my community. Um, I am actually a product of after-school, was in the original nineteen-ninety-six pilot program at Harkness Elementary. Um, grew up in after-school, came back as a volunteer. Uh, was a, was actually able to receive the Presidential Freedom Scholarship Award because of the volunteer, uh, opportunities I had with the after-school program. And, uh, eventually, as a, a employee now, um, working in after-school for almost twelve years, I've seen those opportunities come back and able to provide those to the kids in my program. And that's kind of what my drive is every day, is to make sure those kids have all those same opportunities that I had, and even more than what I had in after-school. Um, so again, I urge, um, that we find a way to fully fund, um, all of the after-school programs so that we don't have to prioritize, and ultimately, we don't have to turn families away. Um, again, my families are waiting to hear from me, who got in. I have to now figure out how to get two-hundred-and-fifty kids down to eighty-five, and then tell all the rest of those kids that you don't have a place to go after-school every day. So again, I just urge that we find the funding somehow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlene Seballos, Kayla Young, and Lamaya Coleman.
Well, they're walking up there. Alex, you said there were a number, uh, on the, uh, um, uh, on the issue of expanded learning, and what was the second category?
General comments.
General comments. So will you tell me when expanded learning is completed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, board member Wu. I would like to present to you with, um, support letters for our after-school programs. My name is Kayla Young, and I attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Thank you. I'll add it to the foot of cards I already have.
You can bring them up.
Thank you. Actually, they're gonna fall over.
Good evening, board members. My name's Charlene Seballos. I'm with the center. I'm also the program manager at Woodbine ACES. Behind me is the face of after-school, not only my staff at Woodbine, but also my colleagues. Not only does, um, after-school save our students, but it also saves us as well. These college students obviously depend on after-school programs to gain the experience for their college careers and for everything beyond. And for us as program managers, not only do we help these students achieve goals and the things that they want to learn, that they are interested in, but also, we learn from them. So I feel like expanded learning programs not only benefit the students, but benefit those that are still continuing their education even outside of the K-12 system. So I'm urging you, board members, to please not only save our students, but save our learning as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give it to Alex?
Lamaya Coleman, followed by Dakota Elliott and Jeffrey Frank.
Hi, my name's Lamaya Coleman, and I'm a parent of a William Land student. I want to speak to the expanded learning program. Um, when I heard it was getting cut, or there was, the funding was partially getting cut, it was obviously a concern, but then when I heard the presentation at our school, that they're, that they're wanting to move to a hybrid program, where it's partially subsidized, partially, um, paid, I thought that was a great idea. And so I really want to encourage you guys to support and make space for a hybrid program where it's not, where the, the staff don't know who's, there's no differentiation between those who are subsidized, those who are paying, um, and, sorry, I've just... I, I feel like, what, I, our family is a family that could afford to pay. I thought it was really odd. I wanted to have my daughter in an expanded learning at William Land and not have her go to the YMCA. But I thought it was odd that there was, the only way I could get, I could get her there last year was by taking one of the subsidized spots. And so that meant that, in all likelihood, a family who couldn't afford after-school care ended up not getting a subsidized spot, because my daughter did, and I wasn't willing to give it up. So I think having a hybrid program is a really great idea. I'm also excited that it may not be same cost as something like Fourth R, because that's a ton of money. So I just wanted to support that. Um, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I forgot. Yeah, and in terms of how you guys distribute the money, I think it's really important that you look at the needs of the schools and the needs of the students in a global sense, um, for where to put, how to distribute the funding.
Thank you.
Dakota Elliott, Jeffrey Frank, and Frank D. Young.
Hello, hello? Okay.
Hello, hello?
Hello, everyone. Um, good evening. My name is Dakota Elliott. I am currently a senior at Hiram Johnson High School. Um, and I'm a member of the JCP Academy. My friend Yi, who just spoke earlier, asked me to come here about three hours ago. Um, I was pretty, heard about this on pretty short notice. And currently, I'm not actually involved in the assets program, yet I'm still able to fully understand and see the necessity of this program for, uh, multitude of students. Um, you've already seen many examples of clubs, uh, that are doing many great and, uh, very supportive, um, activities throughout the community. And you're seeing, um, other students being able to kind of show their true passions through after-school activities that is, obviously, has so many importance to their futures. Um, another thing that I'd like to bring up and add to this is the fact that, um, assets allows many of the students that have made past mistakes, um, in their, uh, high school years to make up classes that they need in order to graduate. Without the assets program, uh, several of my friends over the past couple of years, and even this year, would have absolutely no chance of graduating. For many students, the, um, summer programs aren't an option because of work and other things that they, other responsibilities that they have. And their only other options are the assets program. ASIS program. I currently have 10 to 15 friends that are currently in this program and it's because of this program and the availability of this program that they're going to be able to walk the stage with me come 10 days from now when I'm graduating. I'm not arguing this for myself, I'm arguing this for the future generations that need this program in order to graduate and for my friends that use this program to express themselves. And I just hope that you can see the importance of this program through all the presentations that we've had today and hope that you can do everything in your power to make this happen and get the funding for these programs. Thank you.
Jeffrey Frank, and last speaker is Frank DeYoung.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Banda. My name is Jeff Frank, representing, I'm a parent representing AMWEN Elementary. I'm here first to express gratitude that after the 21st Century Grant funding expired, that the district was able to continue funding some of the after-school programs. What I wanted to touch on was the before-school program and it's not just a childcare, it's a, it incorporates this social, this very important social, emotional learning aspect. And Andrew's going to talk about that a little more, but when his grandmother first started teaching in the district in the 1960s, she happened to have a side tour at Aerojet. And one of the engineers said, "Look, we can, we can train engineers, we can train mathematicians, we can train people to work here, but we can't, we can't train people to get along with each other." And that's what, that's what Aces does, that's what the enrichment does. So, I really hope this district can find funding to continue the before-school. Andrew wanted to comment.
Before I went to Aces, I was like getting bullied and stuff. At, I was just going for one for Aces, I would still be like, that would probably still be happening and... Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Frank DeYoung with Hollywood Park Elementary School. I'm here to talk about expanded learning because I think it's vital to the children of our community. I know some of you on the board are probably thinking, "We only have so much money." Well, let me paint this picture for you. You put these kids on the street and where do you think they're going to end up? And what is going to be the cost of the community, the city, the county, and this district to try to keep them in school and get them graduated? Supplemental funding is exactly out there for the kids that are targeted in these after-school programs. How tough can this be? It can't be that hard. It's low-income English learners, foster children. I mean, really. I'll tell you what, my grandson will not be in an after-school program next year because he has a place to go and I don't want some other kid to be deprived of that opportunity. But the rest of these kids don't. And once they're on the street, I don't think I have to paint you a picture of who's waiting for them. So, you guys, every time this board has a tough decision, it falls on like Area 5 and the low-income schools. Those are the ones that get closed. The low-income students get cut. They're not allowed to get the things that they need so that they can succeed. This board needs to make the right and tough decision and find the money to fund these after-school programs. Thank you very much.
So, I'm going to exercise the prerogative of the chair to address expanded learning. I want to thank everybody for their comments and I'm really, really distressed that we had to, that our funding was eliminated. But we need, we up here, need all of your help because if you have not been following the federal budget, our new Secretary of Education has completely eliminated Title I funding for expanded learning. So, next year, there won't even be any money to pass to the state, to pass to us. So, we need your help in contacting our congresspersons to say that it is also important for you to have expanded learning in your classrooms because we get a lot of blame because we're ultimately a decision-maker. The money is coming from Washington DC and Secretary DeVos has recommended eliminating the program completely. Nine billion dollars throughout the United States, completely. So, we need your help to let our congresspersons know that it is important to you, just as you're telling us it's important to you, because Washington needs to hear that they need to continue to fund Title I, they need to continue to find, to fund after-school programming because it is that important to you. I understand we're looking, trying to find the money to continue the program, but the reality is if next year there is no money, I don't know what we're going to have to do to continue the program. So, please help us, help you, so that your programming can continue. Thank you.
Next speaker is Darlene Anderson, followed by Angel Garcia and Angie Sutherland. If you could please stand in order while you wait.
Somebody asked me what I do for enjoyment. I hate to tell you that this is what I do. So, I wanted to talk about right now, 504s and the accommodations that are written that don't lead to educational outcomes. And I think that our district is implementing 504s wrong. I work with several students who have 504s, who are children who are being documented. I'm attempting to file an Office of Civilized Complaint because I believe that when you have a transition issue, then you need to have written goals to learn how to overcome that issue. And right now, the 504s don't read that way. They just document kids. And then, the district is using third-party providers to help collect that data. Well, if you collect all that data, I don't know how it goes to help the student and so that's where I'm stuck. And simply because willful defiance is an issue in this district, we have so many kids who are caught up in the willful defiance under, under a 504 or under the SARB or under the Student Attendance and Review Boards, but all that data is collected and many parents don't even know that that is happening. Then all of a sudden, their kid gets in trouble and they're in the ninth or 10th grade, then that's going to juvenile hall with them. That record's following them, but they never knew that everybody was joining in saying, "Oh, he threw a spitball and he pushed in the line." And all kind of crazy stuff is written in the, over there in the SARB. And guess what? Parents don't even know it's happening until it happens. You know, this part about the funding being cut under Betsy DeVos, it's the best thing to happen to California because it woke everybody up and now they all know they have something to lose. Quite frankly, what they have to lose is they were never involved. So, now, it's time for them to get engaged and oversee the public education system because it is our duty as citizens to oversee the benefit to public education for all kids. And for African-Americans who right now are having little or no benefit in the public school system, it's time for the black community to wake up because right now, we're determining what benefits. And so, when you're saying that you're not going to have money for after-school support and after-school support is all that you have that benefits that segment of the population, you have to understand, more people need to talk about what's happening at the school site and why that's not benefiting all kids because all kids are not benefiting. So, it's just important, it's critical. You know, we can talk about stop the bullying, when we're not teaching character education, we can talk about a lot of things that should happen at school-site level that are not happening and the board can't make those decisions. It's not up to the board to determine what school needs what, it's up to the school-site council. And that's why you don't micromanage and you don't manage at all, but it's up to the community to get engaged and not let that single plaintiff of student achievement go, get signed from the parent who is overseeing it when it's not benefiting all kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene.
Angel Garcia, followed by Angie Sutherland.
Or the other way.
Or the other way.
She told me to go in front of her. Hi, I'm Angie Sutherland and I'm a parent in this district of a student with a disability and a community organizer. I wanted to present some thoughts and comments for you as board members to consider as you conduct your reviews, you make critical decisions this month related to the budget, to special education plans, to the local control accountability plan, and contract negotiations which are happening as well. I wanted, my first comment is about a culture shift. We need a culture shift in our district to make this a place for all children to learn and grow. The destination district rhetoric doesn't have any substance to me. We have to do the real work necessary and set our priorities to make things equitable for the kids that we have here now. How many years is it going to take us to move forward to help the children while the adults bicker about the process? Not everything needs to be a contract negotiation. When will we stop building initiatives that our students need around what is easier for adults? When will the children's rights be honored? I'm talking about special education inclusion, I'm talking about SPARC, Social and Emotional Learning, and all the components of the SPARC program, restorative justice. All students deserve equitable access to learn in self, in safe, welcoming, rigorous, and inclusive environments and they deserve to make progress that's going to help prepare them for their future. Equity, access, inclusion, bullying prevention, restorative practices, SEL, whole child, these are not simply buzzwords and slogans to post at the school entrance. When climate is off, so are the outcomes. Inclusion is not a place, it's a civil right. Allowing adults to negotiate inclusion is a violation of rights. With SEL as it stands now and leaving the school sites to make their own plans where they discuss a word of the week, they send a robo-call out to the families to say, "This is the word of the week." They post it on Facebook. It's not making a huge difference. We need to do more to closely monitor the climate and practices in each school with the goal of making every school a place where everyone belongs. School classrooms are where our children are. Schools should each be required to present how they are doing and if they are not doing well. Why are the charters the only principles that we see here at the board meetings, presenting themselves to prove why they should stay open? How are you also reviewing data, posing questions, and giving directives to the 60-plus other schools where most of our kids are? I'm not complaining, I know we have a lot of work to do and I want to help and I'm looking forward to transformative change and want to be part of the solution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland.
Good evening, Board Member Superintendent Banda. My name's Angel Garcia. I'm a parent of four children and also a part of the CAC. I just wanted to piggyback on what Angie was saying regarding climate. We really need to look at not just the initiatives that we propose, but look at implementation to ensure there is a culture shift as Angie mentioned. We need to look at outcomes to ensure that what we were saying we were going to do and what we did worked with not only students, but parents and staff and we need to collect data to do that. It shouldn't be only special schools that do that. I want to give a shout-out to the Met because thank God, they're opening their doors for my son to go there because they're so, they're so supportive and such a school with a warm, inviting, welcoming climate. And it shouldn't just be those schools and it shouldn't just be the after-school programs. And I do want to highlight the after-school programs because we have about 25 sites that I've noted that are at risk of their funding or their funding's being cut. I want to give a shout-out, I heard Ms. Pauline's name from Cal. When my son started getting bullied at Cal, Ms. Pauline was his safe haven at the after-school program where he, he was okay. He didn't go into a crisis because he had that. For my other children, Ms. E from Cabrillo and Mr. Cameran, who's no longer there, at the START program, supported my children. And now, Ms. Nguyen at Cabrillo has opened her doors so that my son Adrian, even with his depression, has a place to intern and he volunteers there at the after-school program at Cabrillo. And it shouldn't be just the after-school programs and the special schools that have that welcoming climate, it should be all schools that are impactful. So, I look forward to working with you all, but I really hope that the initiatives, the resolutions that we talked about really come to fruition and they're not just in the form of a strategic plan, that they're outside the purview of just an initiative or a resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angel.
Maria Lopez, Maria Flores, followed by April Libarra and David Fisher. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Banda. Mi nombre es April Libarra y yo soy una madre en el distrito de Sacramento escolar. Este, yo pudiera dar mi comentario hoy en español pero no lo haré. What I just said was, "Good evening, my name is April Libarra and I am a parent here in the Sacramento District." And I could give my public comment this evening in Spanish, but I'm not going to do that. The reason that I started, the reason that I started speaking in Spanish is because my public comment is going to be about the support for English language learning parents and the, the way we feel unsupported in the process of the DILAC and the EL, LCAP committees. Translation has been something that we've talked about many times. When the LCAP draft came out, it was not translated into Spanish and you have some wonderful and amazing parent leaders that don't speak fluent English and needed that in order to be able to have the same timeframe given to the LCAP committee, to be able to give you their feedback and have that meaningful time to think about what they were going to say. Something else that I often hear from some of the parents that I get to work with as a parent advocate in the, in the district is that as English language learner, as English language learning parents, we often feel that we're not treated the same and we are often requested to give input, but some of the input that we give is ignored. A couple of years ago, I got to meet with Superintendent Banda and some of the staff here in the district and one of my concerns was around reclassification for English language learners, but also around graduation and the A to G requirements. Before I left one of that, one of the meetings that we had, I was reassured that we do support ELs in that area. And I want to reference an article that came out in the Bee and it says that college readiness for English learners, students who had passed the A to G requirements for admission to be able to go into universities of California fell from an already low of 23.1% in 2013 to an appalling 9.8%. We are willing to work with you guys. We want to continue this collaboration to be able to reach out to the community and to those parents who are telling us what their needs are. Some of them came out to those townhome meetings that you had in the search for the superintendent. I sat in just about every one of them and they were there and they were ready to give you guys their feedback. So, they're there and they're ready, but we need the respect and we need to be treated equally because our students are generating a big portion of income that is coming into this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pritchett.
I just wanted to reiterate what I think I saw our last, that I heard our last speaker say. So, if I understand correctly, was the LCAP presented to the DILAC in English?
I wasn't there. I don't have the answer, but we have Ms. Sereta here.
Okay, maybe if you guys can come up to the microphone.
Could you repeat your question?
Yes. So, was the LCAP presented to the DILAC committee, when it was presented to them, was it written in English?
Cuando presentaron el LCAP...
Okay, maybe if you guys can come up to the microphone.
Could you repeat your question?
Yes, so was the LCAP presented to the DILAC committee? When it was presented to them, was it written in English?
Cuando presentaron el LCAP al comité de DILAC, estaba imprimido en español o en inglés o en otros lenguajes? No necesariamente en español. O solo en inglés? A mí me la entregaron en español. So she was, it was turned into her in English, pero en la junta de DILAC. En la junta de DILAC? En español? At the DILAC meeting, it was presented to her in Spanish.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
But when it was released, it was only translated, the only thing that was translated was the actual format of what needed to be filled in. And in my opinion, part of that is because there's a lack of translation for the people working on that in general. So not necessarily their work, but the support that's needed so that they can get that information out in time.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Flores y vengo también a hablar acerca del programa de DILAC. Good afternoon. My name is Maria Flores and I would like to speak, talk to about LCAP program. I don't speak too much English. And I don't have any person over there because, to speak English for me, translation, because she say only, this meeting pay only for 8 o'clock to translate to me in Spanish. I don't know if you understand me. I'm so sorry, but I try to, okay? Again, my name is Maria Flores. I have like 18 year in the district. I have four child in the district. Three of those child are in the program. Two of those are graduated from high school and never out to the program, never. One of those stay in the program. They are now in fifth grade. And again, you hear something about after-school program or LCAP program. I'm so frustrated with this program. I came here because I need you. All this, and I don't know if behind me are a person who have child in second language program or I don't know. I can, I can express, okay? Teacher, wherever they are over there, if they want to support me, please stand up. But you guys are especially, because I go to the LCAP, LCAP program. I am represented in the meeting every month. And this, in this community, don't do nothing for the student for English learner. I go and sit down for maybe one or two hour over there and only talking about the budget, how the budget are in the, in the district, how it distributed. But the meeting, the committee, don't do nothing for the students. In this year, there's unfortunately, the committee can vote, don't vote for a new president for next year. I don't know who are you, are charger for this program. I know Ms., Vanessa, I know Ms. Vanessa is over there every month. But I'm so frustrated. I don't know if you want to do, I have paper here with my child report and nobody answering me why my child are five year in this program. Supposed to be this program is for three years and the student reclassified out. My child are in sixth grade and they lose the K program, music program, computer program when I go to middle school or high school. I don't know if you have child. I don't know if you want your child to serve in this, in the school. If you know, I am. I'm many years here, 18 years. And I see Vanessa present to you a lot of student here when they begin in this meeting. And you know, I thinking about it, my two child never go out to this program and never take K program. I know my child don't speak well English, but they are smart. There's no point to stay in this program. Another point is, I have one letter, I want this letter. And I don't feel this when I register my child in the school. Maybe some person helped me to, to register my child and they put my child, "Which language did your child learn when he or she first begin tag?" Of course, Spanish, but they speak English too. So please do something. But now, not next year. Only I hear something changed in LCAP program. Vanessa show us a vision for maybe next year or two years. Change something in the program. Come on, get out. I'm not stupid. I not speak well English, but I'm not stupid. And my child know stupid too. Sorry for you guys. I'm so frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pritchett and then Member Cochran.
Thank you, Member Will. First off, I just wanted to thank the last speaker for being an advocate for your child and coming here. I know how frustrating it can be to come in front of the board and how these people, they come here late at night. They're away from our families, from their families, I should say. You're our families too. But just thank you for being that advocate. I do want to ask, is there still an area superintendent in the audience, too? Can I ask you that you please pull her aside and have a conversation with her tonight? Get her information so we can reach out to her and help her with what's going on at the moment. The last thing I did want to say real quick, sorry, David. I think I heard her say that our interpreters leave at 8 o'clock. And I don't know the reason why, but I do want to say, like I said earlier, these people come here and it is 8:30. They're away from their families. They probably haven't even eaten dinner yet, right? You probably still have to go home and make dinner for yourself and then put your kids to bed. I want to make sure that when we offer interpreters at our meetings, that they stay until we don't need them any longer and that they check in with the people that check in with them that have the headphone sets. They, we need to hear all of your voices and you all need to know that we want to hear from you.
Member Cochran.
Señora, por favor espere. Señora, por favor. Laura, señora Rios, puedes traducir para mí? Gracias.
So I've just asked Laura Rios to translate for me in lieu of not having a professional translator here from the district during a school board meeting. I appreciate that. Thank you. So, señora gracias, thank you for coming. Please tell us what school your child is enrolled in. John Bidwell. So I'm not sure who has John Bidwell, but I think that that's a start here. Is that Representative Mai Vang will very much advocate and help for you to solve your personal problem. But there's a larger problem here than the personal problem of the señora. I attend almost all the DILAC meetings and I am frustrated too. We have parents attending the meetings, but we don't have enough. At the last DILAC meeting, there was an opportunity to elect new officers for the next year and it could not happen because we did not have enough parents from schools to elect the officers. And so we left that meeting off of sirless for the next year. The problem in my mind is motivating and encouraging and giving the tools to site principals to gather together the LCAP parents and encourage them to come to the district meetings. The district is where the policy changes, where the information gets disseminated and where things can happen. But if we don't have representation from the parents at the school site, it makes it very difficult. This is not the parents' fault. This is communication. Are the principals and are the EL coordinators actually making the type of efforts that they need to make to get meeting attendance? And then on the district's part, are we really offering the opportunity to have full, robust meetings, gathering together parents so we can address the problems that we have with the English Language Learner Program? I agree with you, señora. To have your child graduate from this district, I'm assuming that the graduates who are in this program for K through 12 is absurd and it should not be happening. We need to take a serious look at what is happening in this district for the English Language Learner Program and we need to change things. Thank you.
I speak in Spanish and Laura trust to you. Quisiera nada más pedirles, por favor. Yo no sé cuántos comités hay en el distrito, pero el comité de ICAP tiene muchos padres.
She doesn't, she's not, she's asking for a favor. She's not sure how many committees are here in the district, but she does want to have the full support on the DILAC committee.
Pero no se nos permite a los padres hacer un cambio para nuestros estudiantes.
But it's not permitted for them to do that change in the DILAC.
Yo pido que, por favor, nos ayuden a los padres a hacer cambios en el, en el comité. Que nosotros tengamos voz y decidamos como este pasado junta que tuvimos que no pudimos elegir un presidente porque no había suficientes padres. Queremos cambiar las cosas.
They want to, we want to change the things that's happening also at DILAC because there's not enough of representation from the schools and as you had mentioned also that there was, we couldn't do elections due to the low, low performance attendance.
Por favor, ayúdenos, eduquenos. Sé que no estamos bien educados y que falta de comunicación es la que nos hace falta, pero ayúdenos. Necesitamos de ustedes los padres que hablamos especialmente español y otras lenguas.
So she's really asking for your support, your help to educate us parents to even, you know, to really make that voice, to have that voice. So she's really asking for the support from the board to really support.
Thank you.
And I just want to add a little bit about DILAC. I'm currently, you know, the secretary of that committee. There is, there is for DILAC to present at 9 o'clock or nine something in the evening today, the report. And as Ms. Pritchett was saying, that's too late for us. I mean, the translators had to leave. They don't want to stay overtime, so it's hard. I mean, that there alone just lets you know. So I don't know what's protocol, policy, or if there's a way that they could actually move that DILAC report, at least, so that way we could report back to what happened and, because we have some numbers for you, for each board member. So that's up to you.
Thank you.
Ese es el reporte que estoy pidiendo. Sí, pero no me interesa. Sé que no es mi tiempo. Sé que no es tiempo para hablar.
Le pedí que ver si podía mover el reporte para Laura.
Pero se va a ir ella. ¿Te vas a quedar? Quiero que se quede.
She wants to do the report, but I'm telling her that there's a time that I had, I just asked you, you know, what was the policy behind that? How could we do that? And she's like, I don't have time for that, so I don't know.
No entiendo, no entiendo por qué no gastan dinero en cosas que en realidad son prioridades.
She doesn't understand why there's not any money spent on things that are priority.
Ahorita se falta una intérprete.
Right now, we need an interpreter?
Porque yo a esta señora, desde hace mucho que ha ido a quejarse al DILAC.
Because it's been a while since, Maria?
Maria.
Maria has been going to the DILAC meetings complaining?
Le dije que aquí es donde tenía que venir a hablar.
And so she requested her to come here to do her complaints, her comments.
Yo se la mandé a Mai.
She already sent her to Mai?
Para que le resolviere el problema.
To resolve the issue?
Para mí es vergonzoso que vengan a decir.
For me, it's embarrassing for, for.
Que venga a decir que el comité no sirve.
Oh, for, just people to say the committee is not working?
Porque estamos haciendo todo lo posible por escuchar a los padres.
Because we're doing the best possible that we could, that we could do to listen to the parents.
Pero no podemos hacerlo solos.
But we can't do it alone.
Necesitamos el apoyo como dijo la señora de ustedes.
So we need the support, just like Ms. Maria said.
Aquí traigo el reporte y de lo que yo escribí.
And we have, she has a report?
Si podían hacernos el favor de veras de moverlo porque no había media, es muy tarde.
So if you could do us a favor to move it up, because it's 9 o'clock, 9:30 would be a little bit too late.
She's there. Give your report, quickly.
Y tienes tres minutos, se llevan diez minutos.
Okay, yo quiero decirles que con respecto al comité, la culpa no es ahora de ustedes.
She wants to say that on respect of the DILAC committee, not all fault is yours?
Pero sí gran parte.
But yes, a great deal?
Porque ninguno de ustedes se ha responsabilizado de ir a apoyar realmente si los comités en las escuelas están funcionando o no están funcionando.
Because none of you have actually gone to the school sites to see if they've been sending their reps, los representantes, verdad?
Tenemos aquí que las escuelas que tienen más del 40% de English learner.
So we tally up that schools, the 40, that have 40% more of ELs, English learners?
Y que reciben del título uno.
And they also receive Title I funding?
Son diez las escuelas.
There's 10 schools?
Dos son de Mai y solo una fue.
Two of those schools are from Mai's district and only they went once.
Seis son del señor Michael.
Six are from Mr. Michael Minnick's district.
Y solo dos asistieron a los meetings.
And only two schools were presented.
Y dos son de la señora Jesse y ninguno se presentó.
Two school sites are from Ms. Ryan's and none of them, none either went to be at the.
Trece, seis fueron los que asistieron a más de cuatro reuniones.
There's 13 sites that went to more than four meetings.
Y en el último meeting no se llevaron a cabo las elecciones.
In our last meeting, we couldn't hold elections?
Porque no estuvieron presentes diez representantes que es lo que requieren.
Because according to our bylaws, we have to have at least 10 school sites represented.
Y es aquí donde yo también les pregunto a los padres.
And this is where she also asked the parents?
¿Saben ustedes en qué utiliza su escuela ese dinero?
Do you know, the parents, if the parents know where they spend their money at?
Y que ustedes como representantes, ¿qué van a hacer para que los padres involucren más?
And you as our representative, what would you, what are you going to do to make sure that our parents are being more involved?
¿Dónde están todos esos padres que cada año se graduan de aquí del distrito y no sirven?
Where are all those parents that are graduated from the university, from the vice department? Where are they? Where are those parent leaders?
Porque no están participando.
Why are they not participating in these committees?
¿Cuál es, qué es lo que les falta? ¿Qué es la motivación que les falta?
What is the motivation? What is it that they need?
Para mí es vergonzoso que hayan venido a decir eso porque yo no sé si me vaya o no me vaya a quedar el próximo año como vicepresidenta.
It's embarrassing for her to hear that the DILAC committee is not working because she's not sure if she's going to be staying for another term for, to do vice chair, to change her chair.
Pero lo que quiero es que esté o no esté, tratar de traer más padres a este comité.
So if she's on the board or not, she wants to make sure that there's more reps coming to the, to the DILACs.
Y tratar de dar realmente como dijo la señora, la señora María, cosas que nos importan como padres de aprendices de inglés.
And to really, you know, what's important to our ELs, to make sure they're, I mean, this is a committee where they need to be represented. I want to add, there's, there's 38 schools that, you know, that were, that are for the ELs. Nine are not required to attend because they have the less percentage, but there's 29 in all. And all of those 29, only 13 sites actually came to the, to the, to the DILACs. We keep on seeing the same parents coming over and over and over, but there's no accountability on why are these sites are not coming. We, we almost, we almost had a, we actually had a full board. We almost, we almost had, we actually had a full board for next year, but somehow one of the board members, one of the ILLAC chairs, ILLAC chairs at their site, should not even be an ILLAC member because he doesn't have any kids in the district that are ELs. But yet, they have him listed as their chair at their school site. So how many of those are there? And that's our question. So how many of those are there out there? Maybe that's why they're not coming because no one's saying, you know, are you an EL student? Or they're not invested, period. They're just not invested. So we do have the comments for the ELL cap that we try to get together. We actually got them from our needs assessment that was done in the beginning of the school year, and we incorporated those into their comments. So you should be receiving those, a copy, and Kathy has, we gave them, she has them. So there are the comments from the ELL cap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perdón por el atrevimiento, pero...
Please excuse her for being so, you know, but thank you.
Member Minnick and then Member Cockman.
Hi, I have a, I have a question. Would it be possible for you or the staff that supports the ILLAC? I'm not entirely sure who's responsible for the ILLAC committee on staff, but to get us a list of the schools that are regularly sending representatives? Okay. Yeah, we don't, I don't want to put them on blast, but what I would like to do is follow up with those schools that aren't represented, not to shame them into coming, but to find out what we need to do to make this, make this committee worthwhile for them to attend. So if we can get that from you as soon as possible, you know, I know I want to follow up with the, if you said three of my schools, that's eleven schools that aren't represented. I want to make sure that I know why they don't, they don't choose to be there. Awesome. Cool. Thank you.
Member Cockman, Member Bang.
Thank you. Nothing, this woman and her translator said is untrue. You want to know what's wrong, I'll tell you what's wrong. You have got to have accountability for your EL coordinators on site, for your VPs, for your principals, for the school site council and the ILLAC. You have to take minutes, you have to tell people they have to do their job and to get people motivated to come to these meetings. If people cannot come, that's valid, but I can tell you that I have not seen this type of accountability happen on the school sites with the EL coordinators coming through the district, and I have not seen this type of accountability coming down from the district to require the principals and the coordinators to do this. Every part of, every cog in this machine has to work well, and what we have here are frustrated parents. We have regulars who come all the time. They couldn't elect officers because we did not have the support on the school sites to get the ILLAC parents there. There are all kinds of ways you can make meetings more attendable, make sure you have food, encouragement. Administrators come as well to make it seem more important to be at the meeting. Actually care that they show up, take names, take role, laud people who do well. It's one A community organizing, and I actually, I don't like to call out district and staff that much, but this is ridiculous, people. This has been going on since I've been here. Why doesn't ILLAC work? I'd like the answer to that question.
As the district continues to control the...
So I just want to take this time to thank ILLAC, Laura and Teresa for their incredible work on ILLAC. And I know their frustration. I actually met with Burbank ILLAC and I'm in communication with Teresa as well on all of the frustration. I served on the ELL cap before I became a school board member, and so I think a lot of the conversation when I was an organizer, even now as a board and sitting on the budget committee, we had a lot of conversation about really trying to rethink infrastructure level on a school site level. How do you get parent engagement involved at a school site level? What, Member Minnick talked about, what is it that we're going to do in terms of ILLAC to bring parents to the, to bring parents to CERNA? And I think a big part is that we have to really rethink what parent engagement looks like. We got to rethink what ILLAC looks like. And I know that Board Member Cockman is the liaison to the ILLAC. And so I, I know Vanessa staffs the meeting, and so I, I know the last meeting, we weren't able to appoint members, but I want to work with Vanessa, and I think we do need to have some accountability and really work with our parents to really rethink what that needs to look like, to make sure that we get more parents involved, because it needs to come from the district. And so I, Teresa, I want to let you know that I hear you and that we, we have a lot of work to do. And so I think, you know, moving forward, I will, you know, be coming to the ILLAC meeting with Member Cockman, and maybe we can strategize with district staff on how to rethink the committee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pienso que la que debería de estar dando la cara sobre este comité es la señora Vanessa y no yo, porque yo solamente soy voluntaria. Yo agradezco mucho el apoyo que la señora Ellen nos dio porque fue por ella, por lo que nos escucharon. De otro modo, no nos hubieran escuchado. Nosotros teníamos una agenda y la agenda no se llevó a cabo. Entonces, consider, hay soluciones, claro que las hay. No nada más es venir a quejarse. Hay soluciones. La solución sería que, como les dije, como cada uno representante de su área fuera y verificará que en realidad se está llevando a cabo estos comités.
She says that she, she believes that the person that should be up here giving the face to the ILLAC is Vanessa, because she is the one who's in charge of our committee. And she just feels that it should be her coming, because we actually came out with the calendar of the year, things that we wanted to be happening during the year, but that we have different committees coming to ILLAC, oh, we need to put this in the agenda, we need to put that in the agenda. So our actual calendar that we did was kind of put aside. So yes, you know, she believes that, yeah, the way that we could bring in is making sure that we're running the meetings.
Yo me involucré en esto porque quiero ser la voz de aquellos que no se animan a hablar.
So she became involved because she wants to be the voice with those that can't speak.
Y yo aunque esté o no esté en este comité, yo voy a seguir hablando.
Even if she's, she's still at the ILLAC, yes or no, doesn't know, but she's still going to speak up.
Porque nos hace falta precisamente eso, el apoyo de ustedes.
And that's what we need, the support from you.
Y sobre todo en las escuelas que ustedes vayan y convencan a los directores.
And most importantly, go to the school sites and try to speak to the principals and convince them and let them know that this is, this is what needs to be happening.
Y a los padres decirles que es el único modo que podemos tener poderes con la información, de otro modo no.
And the only way for the parents to have that power is for the parents to have the information. There's, there's no way that they could have that power if they don't have, no information.
Yo voy a seguir aquí, con o sin el ILLAC. Okay, gracias.
So she will continue to be here with or without the ILLAC. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
David Fisher, followed by Terrence Gladney. I'm David Fisher, Vice President of SETA. Before I start my prepared remarks, some of you may know it, my children are both English Language Learners, my wife is, her first language is Spanish, and I will tell you, it is confusing once you fill out that form that say you speak another language at home, to get re-designated, it's extremely confusing. The children have to not only pass or score high on what's called the CELP, they have to also get, score high on a standardized test, which in many people's opinions are culturally biased. So sometimes you have parents confused. My child speaks perfect English, the teacher says they're doing well, and they're still not reclassified. I did actually petition to have my son reclassified so he could take the elective to the middle school. So took up a minute of my time, but I think it's important. I want to, if you need some help moving on and what it's like for a parent, I'd be glad to do it. That being said, it was great to see that some students received the Seal of Bili literacy. I think that's a skill that is worth recognizing, especially in this district that may be the most diverse district in the nation. Congratulations to them and congratulations to all of us. It is June and all the hard worker, hardworking educators and employees and students, you only got a couple of weeks left. Every year must be getting old, it seems to fly by even faster. Staying on a positive note, we specifically want to call attention to continued progress in our work with the academic office. Recently launched two critical committees tasked with choosing curriculum. The first for English Language Arts and English Language Development, and the second, a special education moderate severe curriculum committee. Both committees have had their initial meetings and expect to do some important work over the summer to be prepared to launch curriculum pilots in the fall, something our members have been asking for for years. Again, want to appreciate and acknowledge Dr. Irish Taylor's leadership in fostering cooperative relationship. Less positively, as you probably know, our bargaining is now headed to fact finding. We're greatly disappointed by the district's lack of movement and mediation. One proposal, the district mentions that it will be offering a counterproposal in two areas, including class size, which never transpired. The only significant proposal the district has in relation to staffing is to actually increase the number of students per STC mild and moderate special education teachers. This increase remains on the table even after the district finance study commissioned by the Council of Great City Schools makes clear that SAC City Special Education Teachers are significantly understaffed when compared to seventy other school districts. Even more importantly, this board has made a very attractive offer to our new superintendent. That's great. There's nothing wrong with paying high to get the best. Includes a $5,000 increase from the current salary and an additional three and a half percent in the following four years. Again, nothing wrong with paying the most to get the best. However, how does the board justify proposals to educators that is significantly less that than that, particularly when there are currently more than 100 openings in the district? We all agree SAC City should be the destination district for administrators, but should be the destination district for educators and students too. The more deeply we begin to understand the budget, the more convinced we are, despite predictable gloom and doom, we hear all the time, that SAC City remains in the best financial position in its history and has the resources to make, make this district the destination district for all of California, including students and teachers. Thank you.
Mr. Ross, is that statement in lieu of your communications on the 12.1? Thank you.
Terrence Gladney.
I came here from, I run a club, I think, at Cabrillo today in track practice at Brandon Kennedy, so that's why I'm wearing a brandish shirt, Brock Wolfpack. I just wanted to say real quick, I have extensive history with, you know, being involved with parent engagement, and I mean, it's nothing magical, it's a grind, and it's a commitment to continue to do it. It's not a destination of a meeting that is monthly or a night and expecting the parents to come to you. You have to meet them where they are. That's why programs like the Parent Teacher Home Visit are successful. It would have been poetic just if, if the last word on the expanded learning was Mr. DeYoung, because I think he stated it eloquently and forcefully and as powerful as the subject matter is. But to Board Member Wu's point, you know, I provide programming for kids in the summer, and I've seen kids that matriculate through our school district from kindergarten to 12th grade and on into college, and if I poll them, you know, there's a handful of them that have been to the Capitals. When we talk about civic engagement, we're not providing that, we're in the shadow of the Capitol. But those who did get that exposure got it through programs, what we call expanded learning and the extras. And the extras are really the necessities for the kids who need it the most. You know, we talk about ADA and supplemental concentration dollars. We're really talking about students. Those are people. And, you know, I was on the first L cap committee, and as part of my own understanding of what the scope of everything looked like, you know, as a district, you guys are responsible and we're responsible for the safety of that child from when they leave home to when they return. That's the foundational responsibility we have is their safety. So if we're calling after-school programming expanded learning, it's part of the core programming and supports that we should be providing for those kids, and they get the things that attract them to our school district in those things that we call extras. So whether or not it's grant funded or not, I mean, you know, this was part of the same L cap discussion we had in that first cohort of the L cap committee. You know, if our priorities are kids first, then spend on the things that are going to keep the kids in school first. You know, I don't see people from the CERNA Center going and sitting in buildings at the school sites without air conditioning or without roofs and with leaks. You know, if the kids are first, then put them where the safest building is, which is here. Remove the adults from the equation and make our kids safe. You know, we're a safe haven district, but we have EL parents that are coming up here saying that they're not supported, they don't feel safe within the walls of our own district and this building that we, you know, I like to call it the Glass Palace. You know, it disturbs me that when I look through the meeting minutes from, that we're including this packet, that the current L cap committee is expressing the same concerns that we had, that there's not enough data, there's not enough information to make decisions. We're asked to comment, but we're not asked to really impact what is coming before you guys as a budget. A budget that these dollars or these kids, whatever we want to call them, this ADA is generating. You know, we had the audacity in the first L cap draft to talk about spending over a million or $2 million on police officers for kids who come from communities impacted and seeing people like them murdered by police officers, but that was a priority. You know, it's a priority to pay for adults' positions, it's a priority to pay for buildings and structures that are going to take care of adult positions, but we're struggling to take care of the basic necessities of the facilities where our kids attend every day, and we want to say it there first. You know, yes, we should go to the district, but if we have a department called Youth Development, are we not in the business of developing youth, but we're saying there's going to, we're going to rely on the federal government to provide a grant to us? We have a general fund that's supposed to be for our basic core necessities. Are our children not our basic core necessities? I mean, it bothered me when I'm sitting in the L cap committee two years ago, that Britt and Stacy and, and the whole Youth Development Department saying, we're almost entirely grant funded, but that's a priority. How are we a developer on our youth, you know? Are we relying on the federal government to babysit our kids? I don't see Betsy DeVos living in Sacramento. We live here, so we need to make that our priority, and our kids should be our priority, and you state that with your dollars. The reason I self-fund my program that I provided in the summer since 2009 is because that's my priority to provide that for kids. So it needs to be reflected from the people who actually, you know, like the other young lady said, the millions, the millions of dollars sit here. So spend it on the kids. Spend on those kids that are generating the funds and not on the things that really are extras. Thank you.
Miria and Ena.
Sorry, we're a little late to the show. She had a softball game, but we did want to get a chance to just speak on behalf of expanded learning programs as my daughter, Miria Young, so giving her a chance to speak.
My name is Miria Young and I am in fourth grade at William Land Elementary School. I want to share with you how before and after-school programs have helped me grow academically as a student, but also as a person discovering what my calling in life is. The expanded learning programs gave me an opportunity this year to be in Peter Pan the musical and play the part of Wendy. Not only did I learn more about singing, dancing, and acting from Sacramento Theater, but I also learned how to manage my time better, balancing my academics while also pursuing my interests. I learned how to advocate for my studies and learned to ask for more time to complete my school projects. Before, I used to not dare to ask or question my assignments, but I have had to because I have the opportunity to pursue more avenues to learn. While my dad works for the state and my mom in nonprofits, they can't afford all of the wonderful things I have been exposed to, much less many of my friends and their parents. I asked that the board reconsider this proposal and fund expanded learning programs for the full gap of $3 million. Thank you.
I must say, you were a very good Wendy, I must say.
What?
I said, and she was a wonderful Wendy.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's really hard to follow that, but you know, I think, Mr. Wu, you've seen just the power of how expanded learning can affect a school, and I'm just a big believer. I see it firsthand. You know, one-third of the funding is clearly insufficient, but we also know that you have fiscal constraints, and so, you know, I would really love to just... And so, you know, I would really love to just propose that you stick with the $3 million plus as a placeholder for next year. Give us time as community members to work with you as staff and as council, as board members, to really figure out a fiscal solution. I think that avenues are opening up and, Mr. Wu, you know that we've been able to leverage other fundings from the city of Sacramento to do the Mandarin Immersion Summer Program. There are so many chances, but I just encourage you not to kill the momentum that has been established all, through all these years of the funding. So I just really want to encourage you to just hold firm for next year, give us more time to figure out a solution, to make it even bigger and better. Because as you know, the $3 million was just a baseline, it just helped us to just maintain status quo. It can be a lot better and we all know that. And so I really want to encourage all of you to just, just hold that line for $3 million for just one year and give us the time to figure out a solution. Thank you.
And since you came in late, I will repeat to you that we need your help. The Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, in Washington DC, has, in her budget, completely eliminated 21st Century. So we may hold the line, but we got to figure out what's going to happen moving forward, so.
As a family, we would be glad to help you in any way possible.
So at least write letters to Congress, tell them that 21st Century Title I funding is important, we must continue it instead of the complete elimination and vouchers to those who will not be attending our public schools.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, anymore? Well, we can't vote with only three members, so I wish my two colleagues would return to the dais, or at least one of them. Oh, we have, well, they need to be here for the hearings. Yeah, I know that. I know how to count. We'll take a five-minute break. Hopefully my colleagues will return. We'll reconvene at 9:05. You have to leave, you have to, less than four.
You're telling me.
Educate your friends.
Let's see if I can find something.
I understand that, but, you know, that gave me the impetus to... I'm going to vote for the consent. Oh, we have, well, they need to be here for the hearings. Yeah, I know that. I know how to count. We'll take a five-minute break. Hopefully my colleagues will return. We'll reconvene at 9:05. I'm going to vote for the consent. Oh, we have, well, they need to be here for the hearings. Yeah, I know that. I know how to count. We'll take a five-minute break. Hopefully my colleagues will return. We'll reconvene at 9:05. I'm going to vote for the consent. Oh, we have, well, they need to be here for the hearings. Yeah, I know that. I know how to count. We'll take a five-minute break. Hopefully my colleagues will return. We'll reconvene at 9:05. I'm going to vote for the consent. Oh, we have, well, they need to be here for the hearings. Yeah, I know that. I know how to count. We'll take a five-minute break. Hopefully my colleagues will return. We'll reconvene at 9:05. I'm going to vote for the consent. Oh, we have, well, they need to be here for the hearings. Yeah, I know that. I know how to count. We'll take a five-minute break. I could use one more board member up here. Can I have one of my colleagues join me up here? Sorry, it's so late. Okay, we need to continue. I'd like to call item nine, Public Hearings. The first hearing item will be 9.1, Consideration of District Initial Proposal to Classified Supervisory Association, Ted. Thank you. And a concile.
Wu, members of the board, tonight I will, my name is Ted Appel, Assistant Superintendent for Labor Relations. Tonight I will present Consideration of District Initial Proposal to Classified Supervisors Association, CSA. For 2016-17, it's a re-opener, compensation only, and for 2017-20, it's successor contract negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 3547, Sacramento Unified School District. Hereby submits the following proposals to the Classified Supervisors Association, CSA. Articles 1 through 5 revise, to revise these articles necessary to reflect changes in state and federal laws and regulations and/or update outdated language and cross-reference. Articles 6 and 7, over total compensation within the limits of available financial resources while maintaining sustainable budget and fiscal solvency. Articles 8 through 23, to revise these articles as necessary to reflect changes in state and federal laws and regulations or update outdated language and cross-reference. And Article 24, propose amendments, including but not limited to updating the term of successor contract for a three-year term. And the district proposes comprehensive review of all articles, appendices, and attachments to identify any language and/or documents that is outdated, obsolete, or no longer applicable to further update the successor contract for the benefit of unit and members and their supervisors. The district further reserves the right to present any other proposals in accordance with the requirements of EERA, California Government Code Section 3540, etc. Questions and comments?
Thank you for that dispassionate report. Mr. Barrios, do we have any public comment?
Dennis Peterson. One public comment.
Mr. Wu, distinguished board members, Superintendent Bonda and staff, my name is Dennis Peterson. I'm the Executive Director of CSA, the Classified Supervisors Association, and I'm here this evening with fellow CSA member Paul Banks. Paul is an electrical supervisor for this district, one of 19 CSA members. Paul has 14 years of dedicated service to this district. These are highly dedicated employees in CSA that work hard every day to keep this district running. Attached, and I sent out an attachment to the board so you had that information prior to this meeting, but attached is a list of the job classifications that were originally included in the Operational Support Services Unit, now referred to as CSA, under Article 1, Association Certification and Recognition in the CSA Contract. You'll notice that some of these jobs, description or titles have changed over the years. We believe that there are additional classified managers within the district that deserve to be represented by CSA, but never went through the process of being placed in an appropriate represented group when new description, job descriptions or classifications were developed. We look forward to going through this process during this upcoming contract cycle. We're here this evening to sunshine our collective bargaining interests within the CSA contract, which is set to expire on June 30, 2017. We fully understand that this is late in the cycle to begin bargaining, but we also understand the demands of time on your staff, given the ongoing bargaining with your other labor partners. It is our hope that our current contract will remain in force beyond its expiration until we are able to come to an agreement on our successor contract. We plan to bargain all articles of our contract to include salary and compensation. We believe that you will find that our interests are, or should be, the same as yours, to recruit, retrain, and retain the best and brightest so that Sac City Unified School District can move forward in a way that increases achievement and the learning process for all students. To the best, to get the best and the brightest, you need to offer a compensation package that is competitive with surrounding districts. Without that, the best and brightest will go elsewhere. In closing, I would like to draw your attention to the attached remarks, which I have on the screen before you, that I presented to the board at your February 2nd, 2017 meeting. Please pay attention to Page 2, which lists the disparity in health and welfare benefits among your different labor partners within SCUSD. What is the reason for this inequity and when will SCUSD consider uniform health and welfare benefits for all of its employees? We look forward to meeting with your selected representatives to gauge in the collective bargaining process. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I have no questions and my colleagues have no questions. I do have a question, Ted. So this information was brought to us, we've now taken comments on it, so is the hearing on this matter closed and I can close the hearing on this matter?
We have one more public comment that just got added. From Darlene Anderson.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, thank you so much. So I want to talk about an employee that when I was a Vista, worked in the district and she had less than two hours a day. She worked like that until she passed away because she had cancer and she didn't have healthcare. And I'm going to talk about another employee, Lynetta Hughes, that was over there at that school right over there by the freeway, where she worked for the district too, for more than 20 years with less than three hours. So she didn't have any benefits. So guess what happened when she lost her job over there? She became homeless. And guess what? She's still homeless after four years. And so how is it that the district doesn't represent their employees? I mean, how can someone actually work in this district for more than three years? I mean, for 20 years, for three hours? Anything to not give them permanent status? How is it that the district does not review the practices of how they're maintaining poverty in Sacramento, but these employees are giving 100%, their cafeteria workers, their school site workers, they're, you know, making a difference? But then when it comes to making a difference... But then, when it comes to making a difference for them, we're not doing it. Because no one's ever had a conversation about people who work in this district for more than 20 years with two and three hours. What is that all about? Is it about maintaining poverty? Or is it about entitlement for people who don't ever look down to see what's happening to the other workers? I think that this district and the governing board, while they're going through the process of—what do you want, equity and access? That they need to look at people that they've hurt over the long period of time and make them whole. I don't know—Lynetta's still homeless because she had an eviction. Because she lost her job. She didn't plan on losing her job, but I know that she gave 100% to that school site over there, and they didn't give 100% back to her. So I would hope that, you know, in this opportunity to look at SEIU and the classified people and look at who's being maintained in this poverty status for two and three hours, I think that you all need to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Wu, this is a first hearing for public comment, and we'll come to the Board again June 15 for Board approval.
So I can close the public hearing on this matter? Okay. Close the public hearing. Thank you. Moving on then to 9.2, Consideration of District Initial Proposal to Service Employee International Union, SEIU 1021. Ah, Mr. Appel. What a surprise.
So tonight, I'd like to present District Initial Proposal to Service Employee International Union, SEIU 1021, for 2016-17 reopeners, compensation only for 2017 through 2020 successor contract negotiations pursuant to Government Code, Section 3547. The Sacramento Unified School District hereby submits the following initial proposal for the Service Employee International Union, SEIU 1021. For the successor contract negotiations, Articles 1 through 5, move—to revise these articles as necessary to reflect changes in state and federal laws and regulations and/or update outdated language and cross-references. Articles 6 and 7, propose to negotiate in good faith over total compensation within the limits of available financial resources. Articles 28 through 24, revise these articles as necessary to reflect changes in state and federal laws and regulations and/or update outdated language and cross-references. Article 25, propose amendments, including but not limited to updating the term of the successor contract for three-year term. Further, the district proposes a comprehensive review of all articles, appendices, and attachments to identify any language and/or document that is outdated, obsolete, or no longer applicable to further update the successor contract for benefit of unit members and their supervisors. The district reserves the right to present any other proposals in accordance with the requirements of EERA, California Government Code, Section 3540. Questions or...
Mr. Castillo, no public comments?
No public comments.
Mr. Appel, thank you for another dispassionate presentation. No questions from my colleagues. I will close the hearing on item 9.2. Calling then item 9.3, Consideration of District Initial Proposal to Teamsters Local 150. Ah, Mr. Appel.
Good evening, Board.
What a surprise.
The—uh, there's a proposal—I'd like to present District Initial Proposal to Teamsters Local 150 for 2016-17 compensation and up to two articles, reopeners, and for 2017 through 2020 successor contract negotiations pursuant to Government Code, Section 3547. Sacramento Unified School District hereby submits the following initial proposal to the Teamster Union Local 150. For 2017-2020 successor contract negotiations, Articles 1 through 5, to revise these articles as necessary to reflect changes in state and federal laws and/or regulations and/or update outdated language and cross-references. Articles 6 and 7, propose to negotiate in good faith over total compensation within the limits of available financial resources. Articles 8 through 22, revise these articles as necessary to reflect changes in state and federal laws and regulations and/or update outdated language and cross-reference. Article 23, propose amendments, including but not limited to updating the term of the successor contract for three-year term. And the district proposes a comprehensive review of all articles, appendices, and attachments to identify any language and/or document that is outdated, obsolete, or no longer applicable to further update the successor contract for the benefit of unit members and their supervisors. The district further reserves the right to present any other proposal in accordance with the requirements of Educational Employment Relations Act and California Government Code, Section 3540.
Thank you. Any comments?
No comments.
Thank you again for another riveting report. I will close this hearing, man.
Thank you.
Moving on then to item number 10, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Member Wu?
Yes.
I'd like to actually pull item 10.1A, in particular, from the report for an explanation for the facility services for Rainforth Grow Architects from Ms. Allen.
Okay. And any other motions to pull any other items? Before we move on to that item, then, can I have a motion to...
We have one public comment.
On which item?
On 10.1A.
Yeah, wait till we call it. We haven't called it yet.
I'll move.
Can I have the—a motion to approve the rest of the consent count?
I'll move.
Thank you. And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. 10.1A, aye.
Yes. Ms. Allen.
This item is for contract ratification for Rainforth Grow Architects, who are the architect of record for the work that's being done at CK McLatchy High School, both on the visual and performing arts remodel and on the safety issues for this track and field. As the Board may remember, we've been talking about how to address our health and safety issues at the five comprehensive high schools. You guys have generously allocated $10 million towards that work. We wanted to try and do something this summer, so since we were already at McLatchy, had an architect onboard, we took that opportunity to have them draw up the plans, submit them to DSA. The hope is that we can get the work done this summer and not have to close the campus down for two summers in a row. In the meantime, we are contracting with Verde Designs, who is a company that specializes in athletic field master plans, renovations, installations as well. So we met with them earlier this week to go over the scope of the work that we're asking them to do, which is basically a master plan for outdoor athletic improvements at the five comprehensive high schools. We have a meeting with the athletic directors next week. That'll be followed by a series of meetings over the summer with athletic staff, coaches, community, et cetera. It's about a three-to-six-month process, but the hope is that we would end up with essentially two components to that document. One would be a complete master plan for each of the five comprehensive sites outlining needs and wants at various school sites, and then also addressing the health and safety components that we would be able to take care of—if not during the next school year without trying to negatively impact instruction and students' use of the field, at least at the summertime. So we're getting a head start on the health and safety issues at McLatchy. It just made sense. Somebody had to go first. We were already there. School's already closed this summer, so we're hoping we can get it done in one year—one summer.
Thank you. Ms. Barrios, are there any public comments on this item?
Yes, one public comment from Terrence Gladney.
Mr. Gladney.
President Wu, I attended the last facilities meeting, which I think was a week and a half ago. During that meeting, my understanding—and I checked with others in attendance, including Johnson parents and students who spoke to their injuries and their, you know, their issues with their own track and field—my understanding was that there's going to be a $40,000 expenditure to cover a master plan development for all comprehensive high schools, that there was, on paper, a $2 million allocation at each of the five comprehensive high schools, but that was just on paper, per Kathy Allen. She said it was basically a starting point to distribute it evenly. And then, following the master plan agreement, they would look at things, including the master plan itself, as well as equity issues as far as low-income students at particular schools and which schools needed it the most, prior to any additional money being allocated. This is like the second or third time I've been up here talking about this particular issue. It's been sort of passed along, or, you know, communications come back that nothing, you know, was being done behind the scenes. But to have this on the consent agenda after we just had a facilities meeting where Hiram Johnson brought students directly out of practice to a meeting and had that understanding and left, I thought, with the understanding that, you know, all was well because it was going to be reevaluated and we weren't going to make any harsh, hasty, really rapid decisions just for the sake of getting something done. That same conversation came up, that yes, they will be there at CK McLatchy this summer, and the question from the community was, well, does that mean they're going to get theirs done, and what is going to happen to us at Hiram Johnson or West Campus or these other schools that also have needs? And the understanding, again, that I had and others have confirmed, my understanding was that there was not going to be any money spent beyond the $40,000 for the master plan development. But then, just by chance, maybe it's God's intervention, that I was looking at the actual packet and saw $191,000 being allocated for development, which to me means, if you start that process, you're not going to stop in the middle of it, whether you spend $1 million or $200,000. There's no way you're going to stop architects or construction people from building it, because we don't want to go back and have to restart the process or whatever. You're going to let it complete. And why again is this school? Why again is this community being put before others when, you know, in the interest of transparency, the discussion and the communication to stakeholders was that we're going to kind of press pause and evaluate everything, but yet there's something that was trying to be passed on consent, not even for discussion? That's not transparent at all. I mean, we have a lot of students in this district, and they all need to be served, but just because one particular community has a more vocal parent base does not mean that things like this should happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Pritchett. In a minute.
Thank—thank you, President—President?
Yes, you should stick with that.
Come on. President Wu. So I just had a question. So I appreciate your comments, because I was—I was trying to kind of completely understand kind of where we're going next. And I understand, Ms. Allen, that part of this is efficiency, right? We have construction going on, and we want to move forward. I think that there's concerns that, you know, it's yet another thing getting taken care of at McLatchy when Johnson is sitting, you know, kind of waiting. And so I absolutely understand, like, how this looks, and I have concerns too. And so I guess my question then is, would we hold up the process much if we brought this item back on our next meeting on the 15th? Because between now and then, you'll have had that meeting with the athletic directors, where we can talk about the, you know, potential for, you know, a practice field at Johnson, you know, separate from the—where the stadium would—could potentially someday be, and this project at McLatchy, and, you know, those conversations that are going to happen at that meeting. By moving that back those two weeks, what kind of impact does that have on the project? Let me straight.
We have moved forward. We've had conversations about moving forward. You know, we're listening to the community. Again, somebody has to go first. So even if we come back in two weeks, don't take action tonight, and report out on that meeting with the athletic directors, nothing's going to change at the other four high schools this summer. There's just no physical way to get anything done at those other four high schools this summer. So I get the optics of this. I wish it would be a little bit different, but it isn't. We do have a wonderful opportunity to at least address one field's safety problems over the summer. So that's still the goal, as I understand it. Waiting two weeks, yeah, we'll postpone it two weeks.
So let me just clarify what you just said. So when you said that there's, you know, either way, there's no chance of any of these projects kind of getting started this summer at those other four schools, is that because we already have construction being done at McLatchy, and that allows us to start that now, and that we don't have at those other schools? Or is it because we can only start one?
So the projects that we're anticipating to be done for the—to address the safety issues at school sites—so again, just the $10 million—99% of those projects are going to require a DSA set of plans. Based on just the pure dollar amount alone, it triggers a DSA review. Because we were already at McLatchy, because we already had an architect of record onboard, because we'd already looked at some of those issues with the other project that we have out there, it just made sense. Let's add to that contract, get this thing going, get it to DSA, get it through, and maybe have a chance of getting it done this summer. So two weeks goes by, or a month goes by, and we have a master plan, I still can't get anything done at those other four sites this summer.
And if my understanding is correctly, in order to have the Department of State architect out at those other sites, there's a waitlist. Is that correct? Is that right? And so there's like a time thing that we don't have to deal with at McLatchy because we're already engaged with them? Is that...
Pretty much. We already had an over-the-counter—we called it over-the-counter with them. And we don't have an architect onboard for any of the other work, any of the other sites. We wouldn't know what scope to give them until we get the master plan done. You know, for McLatchy, it was pretty easy, based on everything that we heard from the community, that their track and field was their biggest safety issue. You know, the money—the $40,000 that Mr. Gladney referenced was kind of a shot in the dark at the time on what I thought a master plan might cost. I'm telling you, it's going to be more, based on our needs and the analysis that has to take place at all of those five comprehensive high schools. The $2 million, again, that was addressed—again, you have to start somewhere. I have to have something on the books. So at no point in time, you know, are we planning on investing any more than $2 million out of the 10 to McLatchy. If the Board decides, after balancing all the equity issues and what's been spent, and if we want to look at free reduced, you know, whatever triggers we want to use to evaluate how much to spend at each site, if the Board says we want to add more to McLatchy, then we'll add more. If the project comes in over two—which it will—right now, their core academic renovation budget is picking up that difference. So I guess the hard part would be is if the Board, again, after we have this evaluation, decides that less than $2 million should be spent at McLatchy, then we'll have to look at their core academic to rent—to reimburse some of that $10 million.
That's actually what my—some of my concern was, is because we're—because by saying, like, we can go up to $2 million now, we're essentially saying we're just dividing it up $2 million a school. And that's not really the discussion we had, so I'm just trying to figure out what's the best way to do this, and still be efficient and get this work done. So thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Wu. Okay, so I can understand how this looks. And being on the Facilities Committee now for two years, we've been talking about the processes, and we've tried to do this out in the open, and we've now made our meetings where we're meeting at school sites. We had a good 30, 40 people at our last Facilities meeting. And so we're really trying to be transparent. When it comes to things like this, it does look kind of fishy, because we did say, we want to know the big picture before we go to spend any money. Okay, well, like you said, somebody's going to have to go first, and if we want any work during—the—to go forth during the summer, then we have to move now. Right? We know—we know for a fact that Hiram Johnson, JFK, and McLatchy are three schools that probably need the biggest amount of that $10 million, correct? Of the five comprehensive high schools. We know that because of the—the—what did you bring to us that was like two-years-old? That showed the—not the master plan, but whatever.
It was a 2008 master plan that was...
2008, okay. So we know from that master plan, those are the schools that need the most work. We know those schools are probably going to take more than $2 million. Other schools are probably not going to get that much, if that's the way that the Board votes, correct? So I feel comfortable moving... So I feel comfortable moving forth with this, but no more than this two million until we know the entire picture. And I instructed Ms. Allen at our last facilities meeting that before we start voting on, we are going to give one school three million, one school, I'm just making up numbers, one school five million, one school one million. I need to see the entire picture to know this is what's needed in our district. Ten million, this is something I said in our facilities meeting, ten million might sound like a lot of money, but it's not. It's going to be a Band-Aid and we're going to have to look at future options down the road. So, um, I feel that, I, I feel comfortable as the Chair of the Facilities Committee, moving forth with this amount, but no more than this amount.
Might clarify, so it's no more out of that ten. If I need to borrow money or take money from their core academic to.
If you need to pull that out of their core academic, then that's fine, that's in agreement with the school site, not us.
Got it.
All right.
Motion?
Is this a voteable item?
Yeah.
Oh, because it's on the consent, I'll, yes.
I have a second on that. I'll second. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on. We are now at Board Workshops. Uh, item eleven point one, Ethnic Studies Update. Matt Turkey and Mark Carnero.
Seven forty-three, right?
It is seven forty-three. We like the legislature, we stopped the clock. Didn't we see a Mark up here earlier? Isn't that your daughter? Congratulations. We had a little Mark.
Good evening, Vice President Wu, Superintendent Banda and members of the board. My name is Matt Turkey, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, and it is my great pleasure to present to you an update on our Ethnic Studies course. Firstly, I would like to recognize the many people who have come out in support of our Ethnic Studies course this evening. Those who are here in support of Ethnic Studies, please stand. I would also like to introduce the members of the team who are here to present to you this evening. Dr. Mark Carnero, who's been leading our work on Ethnic Studies. Natalie Rosas, current student board member. Dr. Dale Allender, College of Education, Sacramento State University. Dr. Gregory Mark, College of Ethnic Studies, Sacramento State University. Dominique Williams, Ethnic Studies teacher at Burbank High School. Aria Russell, Malia Howard and Alia Rios. All ninth grade students at Burbank High School. And also Jim Peterson, the principal of Burbank High School. This evening's update will include an overview of the genesis of Ethnic Studies in our district, the driving governance behind the course, the budget needed for implementation and the major initiatives involved. Next, we will review some of the results from this year's piloting of the course, hear testimonies from the teacher, student and principal perspectives, and then present our next steps.
Good evening, Superintendent and members of the board. Feel like around this time I should be saying good night though, but, uh, good evening. I would like to begin by saying that today we are here to celebrate the power of youth and community. Uh, in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, the Student Advisory Council conducted a youth action research project, which analyzed over a thousand student surveys and developed out of this research, three um youth development initiatives. The initiatives covered three topics, including dress code, college preparation and ethnic studies. As a result, the S A D students, in partnership with several community organizations and Sacramento State University, developed Resolution twenty-eight forty-five, the Ethnic Studies Resolution. The resolution was widely embraced throughout the community as more than two thousand five hundred petition signatures were collected in support of it. On June fourth, two thousand fifteen, the S E U S D Board of Education unanimously voted to approve the resolution. The night, the, the night the resolution was voted in, former President Darryl Wu said, "This may be the most important resolution that I ever signed as president of this board." I agree with, uh, what he said, since the Ethnic Studies Resolution was passed. A big clap for that. Since, um, the Ethnic Studies Resolution was passed in two thousand fifteen, Sacramento City Unified School District has continued to lead the state in taking huge strides towards our goal of implementing Ethnic Studies as a graduation requirement by two thousand twenty. The Ethnic Studies pilot that we celebrate tonight is proof that when youth and adults work together in partnership as equals, great things can be achieved. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Banda and members of the board. My name is Dr. Mark Carnero and I am the district lead for Ethnic Studies pilot. As Board Member Rosas has rightfully stated, tonight is a celebration of youth voice, community empowerment and social justice. Tonight, we acknowledge that, that the youth, our teachers, the community and our school district are pushing forward the legacy of people of color, who have struggled for generations to have their stories and histories recognized and included within the broader United States narrative. Our youth leaders from the Student Advisory Council, in solidarity with the community and S U S D, have reignited the push for Ethnic Studies that started in the late nineteen sixties with the SF State Student Strike. When Resolution twenty-eight forty-five was signed, S U S D was one of seven California school districts who openly pushed for Ethnic Studies to be implemented district-wide. In two thousand fifteen, S U S D was one of three California school districts who declared that Ethnic Studies would become a graduation requirement for all ninth grade students. In two thousand sixteen, S U S D, in partnership with Dr. Gregory Mark and Dr. Dale Allender, was the first and only school district in California to develop and implement a ninth grade Ethnic Studies textbook tailored made for the region. We are trailblazers within the state and throughout the nation. Our school district moved ahead of the state legislation AB two thousand sixteen, which called for a model Ethnic Studies curriculum to be developed and made available at all California school districts. In addition, we set a precedent for the recently passed HR twenty-six, which proposes that Ethnic Studies be made a graduation requirement for all high school students throughout the state. Our Ethnic Studies Pilot Course aligned with California Senate Bill forty-eight, also known as the Fair Education Act, which requires that public schools provide fair, accurate, inclusive and respectful representations of diverse ethnic and cultural populations in the K through twelve history and social studies curricula. We are proud that this course also reflects the intention behind the new S U S D Safe Haven Initiative, in that our teachers are creating learning environments where all students, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, nationality or citizenship status, can feel welcomed, respected and safe. Importantly, our Ethnic Studies teachers are fostering environments where students can critically analyze the oppressive systems that make our Safe Haven Initiative a necessity. Aside from this course reflecting our district's values and beliefs, S U S D's decision to implement Ethnic Studies is grounded in the growing body of research. Recent research conducted in San Francisco Unified School District by Stanford scholars Dee and Penner, found that Ethnic Studies courses raised attendance by twenty-one percent, boosted GPA by one point four points and raised credits earned by twenty-three. In order to implement the pilot course this year, S U S D has made an impactful investment of about fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. This investment supplied textbooks to about three hundred twenty-five students, covered professional learning for three teachers for sixty hours each and paid for training and ongoing classroom support from Sacramento State Ethnic Studies and College of Education faculty. I would like to introduce Dr. Gregory Mark and Dr. Dale Allender to highlight this important partnership with Sacramento State University.
So my name is Greg Mark and I'm the Director of Asian American Studies, which is in the Department of Ethnic Studies at Sac State. And, um, as Mark mentioned up there, that, uh, really our discipline is new. Students and staff and faculty at San Francisco State, uh, November nineteen sixty-eight went on strike. A few months later, in January, UC Berkeley went on strike and I'm proud to say I was one of those students forty-eight and a half years ago. So, uh, thank you. Darryl, you were there too, right? Yeah. So I was going to say I was crawling in those days, but no, okay. You know, uh, we had kind of four founding principles and has evolved and changed over time. And one was a reinterpretation of US history and for it to be inclusive of all people, not just certain people. Number two, uh, we thought it was important for young people to study their own ethnicity and ethnic identity. Uh, number three is social change. Today, we frequently call it social justice. And number three, uh, four is service to the community. So, uh, here, and part of the partnership with Sac Unified is Sacramento State Ethnic Studies Department created the Sixty-Fifth Street Corridor Community Collaborative Project. Since its inception, we have serviced over thirty thousand people along the Sixty-Fifth Street Corridor, uh, targeting Hiram Johnson High School and Willsey Wood Middle School. And over two thousand four hundred Sac State students have participated in this program. And so we're very, very proud of the partnership and us making a difference in the quality of lives of people along, uh, the Sixty-Fifth Street Corridor. The, um, next part of looking at partnership is within the university, we have developed Ethnic Studies, a partnership with the Teaching Credential, in which my colleague here will talk a little bit more, uh, from the College of Education. And what we want to do is to work together collectively and also with the district to have the teachers who could teach the courses, uh, starting in two thousand nineteen, of which we have two of them here tonight. And you'll hear from one of them, Dominique. And so, um, want to thank you very much for listening to us and, uh, my colleague Dale.
Good evening, Superintendent Banda and members of the board. As noted, I'm Director Dale Allender at the Teaching Credentials Department at Sac State University. Um, I'm co-chair of our Curriculum Committee with Ethnic Studies Now, uh, co-editor of our textbook for the district and then also co-facilitator for professional development. We want to thank you for the opportunity to reflect on our efforts to provide quality instructional materials and professional learning experiences to prepare, prepare us teachers to teach Ethnic Studies to ninth graders in the district. Our work is a labor of love and it has taken an increased significance as Southern Poverty Law Center has documented growing ethnic, racial, religious tension in our country since this past November. We're committed to providing an ever-improving text with student input about how best to help students learn about ethnic histories and contemporary experiences, both their own ethnic communities as well as the communities of their classmates. In addition to the authentic voices represented in the essays, photographs and illustrations in the textbook, I also want to add that the textbook is organized with brain-based learning principles of color-coded text, nuanced repetition, as well as affirmation. Text also includes an extensive glossary of Ethnic Studies vocabulary and a workbook with close reading and critical literacy strategies. Our professional development, on the professional development front, we're working with the teachers to build relationships with each other and their students, to explore implicit bias, deepen their knowledge of ethnic cultures and develop Ethnic Studies curriculum for their classes. Uh, we greatly appreciate the collaboration and we look forward to our continued partnership to empower and educate students in the district. Thank you.
The, uh, three pilot sites that were selected this year were CK McLatchy, Luther Burbank and George Washington Carver High School. These schools were selected for three reasons: the willingness and support of the administration, the education background of the pilot teachers and the demographics of each site. Principal Peterson at Burbank, Principal Lambert at CKM and Principal Alessandria at Carver should be commended for being forward-thinking and trusting their teachers to implement the pilot at their respective campuses. The four teachers who implemented the course, Bridget Martinez, Dominique Williams, Stephanie Cook and Keone Chalk, have extensive backgrounds in Ethnic Studies and Social Sciences. We were lucky to have their vision and expertise piloting this work. Before students took the course, a pre-assessment was developed and used to explore students' perceptions about race and specific regards to their own identity, family, neighborhood, community and school experience. The pre-assessment consisted of sixty-seven questions. The data produced from the pre-assessments reinforced the need for Ethnic Studies pilot within our district. About sixty-eight percent of students feel that they experienced more obstacles in their life because of their race or ethnicity. More than fifty percent of students feel that their personal safety is affected by race or ethnicity. Close to sixty-eight percent of students feel that there are problems between students because of their race, ethnicity at the school. When students were asked to describe a time when they felt that their race or ethnicity influenced others' actions towards them, either positively or negatively, they provided examples like the ones shown here on the screen, some of which I feel uncomfortable to read. The major findings from this data concluded that many students have experienced race-related interpersonal discrimination from peers at school and within their own community. It is our hope that this course can create an environment where students have the ability to process, analyze and transform the many institutions within our society that promote systemic racism and interpersonal conflict. In addition to the pre-assessment data, post-assessments were taken by students after the course through multiple focus groups to determine what they took away from the course. The data showed that students were able to challenge racial stereotype images for the first time, students discovered missing histories of people of color, students raised their empathetic capacity for others, students grew respect for classmates, students developed ideas about their social responsibility in regards to race relations and students began to build a critical perspective on history. Tonight, we have our teachers, administration and students here to give you a personalized account of their own experiences with the course.
Thank all of you for continuously supporting Ethnic Studies. Last summer, um, I just want to talk about the preparation first. One of my favorite PDs was getting with members from the Na'atopam Wintu, Maidu, Nevada City, Nevada City Rantaria and the Nishanon Tribe. We sat down at a table and they each gave us a history of their tribes and, um, a breakdown of indigenous practices that are ages old, that they still practice today. And for the first time, it opened my eyes to how real people's indigenous roots are in two thousand seventeen. And, um, these panelists also happen to be writers in our textbook. So when I was teaching the class, it wasn't just reading out of the book. I had this rich PD and that wouldn't be possible without continuous support from this board. I think that, um, I love teaching social science and I love teaching Ethnic Studies and the impact on me was really real, because it made, um, it, it just gave me the lens to see and respect and appreciate cultures and look at them critically and use all of the strategies in my teacher toolbox to deliver that content to students. And I think that that impact is super meaningful. And as a teacher, beyond simply teaching content or teaching literacy skills, I was able to put students, I was able to put curriculum that was empowering at the same time while reinforcing those literacy skills and strategies that we want students to have. So moving forward, I hope, uh, to continue to have that support and to work with teachers and to just have the consistency with funding and. and to just have the consistency with funding and the team of College of Ed and Ethnic Studies and teachers who already kind of know what they're doing, but just need to deepen our knowledge so that we can deliver that content authentically to our students. Thank you.
My name is Aya Russell. I'm a freshman at Luther Burbank High School and I'm here with my Ethnic Studies teacher, Ms. Williams, and two of my fellow classmates, Aleah and Myla. I learned a lot about Ethnic Studies and during Ethnic Studies, I learned a lot about mine and other ethnic backgrounds. I learned about victories and I learned about struggles. I've learned a great amount of stuff. For instance, my favorite units we've studied have been the Brown versus Board of Education case, the Jim Co laws, redlining, the Cesar Chavez, United Farm Workers Movement, American Boarding Schools, and African history. I never knew about like any of those situations, any of those events, anything until I started taking Ms. Williams' Ethnic Studies class. Ethnic Studies has impacted my view on who I am and where I come from. We've studied my personal ethnicity. I am black, white, queer, and Native American. I will take this powerful information that I have learned along with me throughout the rest of my educational journey and life.
Hi, my name is Aleah Rios. I'm a ninth grader at Luther Burbank High School and I'm here to talk about my Ethnic Studies and what it taught me about my ethnicity. I'm a Mexican-American and I really didn't learn anything about my ethnicity until I got to high school. And I was, until I was put into an Ethnic Studies class, I was taught how Mexican immigrants had to camp outside of fields for a job and they would get paid less than minimum wage.
My name is Myla Howard and I'm a freshman at Luther Burbank High School. My ethnicity is African-American and Iomian. What I learned about my background is that African-Americans were beaten by whites for not sitting on their side of the restaurant. They also fight for the United States to finally grant them the same rights as other Americans, knowing how badly they needed them. My Ethnic Studies class impacted me a lot because I learned how much my African-American ancestors tried and the punishments they received for trying to get what they deserved and what their ancestors didn't have the courage to do. They never stopped until they got what they want, until they got what they needed, which taught me that if I needed something, to always go for it. What I will take into the future is that no one of any color or any kind should feel different nor out of place in any situation. Ethnic Studies really helped me learn the history of many ethnic backgrounds and what I was never taught about my ancestors. Thank you.
There's not much to add after everything that's been said here. I'm Jim Peterson, Principal of Burbank High School. I just want to thank our Sac State partners, the district team, you all for supporting this endeavor. Ms. Williams, it's been a pleasure working with you this year. Last year, it was great working with you too, but it's great, it was, it was great hearing the passion in your voice every time you talked about this curriculum. I want to thank our students for engaging and this has been a wonderful opportunity for everyone. Thank you for offering it to our school. I had a conversation today with a young lady who is in this course and I asked her to narrow down, to distill down what this course means to you, what it makes you feel, and she said empowered. And I think that's important and I think that we should allow this to continue to grow throughout the district. Thank you.
So as you see with the chart here, we are going to be experiencing exponential growth in the next year. SUSD will continue the implementation of Ethnic Studies Pilot Initiative into the 2017-2018 school year. American Legion, Health professions, CK McClatchy, Luther Burbank, Rosemont, Hiram Johnson, Carver, Kennedy, and New Tech will be included in the second phase of the pilot. In the second phase of implementation, SUSD will continue to build and add more sections at each school site. There will be approximately forty-five sections of Ethnic Studies offered in 2017-2018. The program will serve approximately one thousand four hundred and eighty-five students. Twenty-four teachers will receive sixty hours of professional development and preparation for the school year, and SUSD will continue its partnership with the students, teachers, parents, community, and CSUS, ensure that the multiple voices and perspectives are included in the continued development of this course. And I will open up for questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Canaros. Are there any public comments?
Twelve public comments. In order, if you could come up and line up in order, please. Elizabeth Esparza, Rashad Badir, Bridget Martinez, Tro Margarita Berta Avila, Mario Galván. Those are our first five speakers.
Hi, again, I was here earlier. A couple of months ago, maybe two months ago, I was volunteering in my kid's school. One of the kids was having a bad day with a substitute, one out of nine in one month. I'll come back later to that. Anyways, he's having a bad day and I take him to the side and I'm like, hey, what's going on? I know you since kindergarten. Don't try to fool me. I know you're a good kid, like, you know what I mean? You're smart. And he gets upset and he tells me, they always do this to me and they don't like me. And I said, what do you mean? He said, they treat me different because I'm black. This kid told me. I said, what do you mean? Yes, I could tell when a teacher is good and when a teacher doesn't like me and I know it's because I'm black. I said, no, no, it's not. I said, I don't, I don't think so. I'm not, I'm gonna validate that you feel that way because of everything that goes on and what you might be seeing, but I would really hate for you to grow with this hate in your heart. I said, you know what? I just seen a book. So I went and I got an Nelson Mandela book. I said, you read this. When you feel this way, just look through it and you're gonna see how this man didn't have that hate in his heart besides everything that happened to him. Anyways, it's been a couple of months and this kid still has that book sometimes out, okay? Ethnicity is not about people of color. White people have ethnicity too. They're Scottish, they're Irish, they're Polish, there's many of us. And so, going back to what I told you guys about going back to school, I started sociology because I identified with a lot of stuff that was going on and that I could, I didn't know the names they had for him, but I knew what it meant. When I went to Sac State, then I started taking Ethnic Studies classes. That made me realize that sociology also had it wrong because they were talking about European immigrants, not about me, right? Now, when I look at the history books, I go to the thrift stores and I skim them. I love to skim them because I'm not in there. I am not in there. There's a couple of Indians, there's a couple of blacks, and they just talk about slavery and how they, you know, they, they won the West and then that's it, you know? I used to, I used to say, oh, I wish I was born in the fifties, you know, that's so. But now that I'm educated, I'm like, no, the fifties were not good. My life was not happy days. My life was not Greece. You know, my life wasn't what they represented me back then on TV as, as a Mexican-Greaser. Anyway, I'm here to say that we need to teach all of our students, all of the ethnicity so that the ignorance isn't there, so that these killings stop the ignorance, the hate, and not just in our communities, but in our government. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Rashad Badir.
Thanks.
Bridget Martinez.
Good evening, board members. I'm Bridget Martinez. I teach Ethnic Studies at McClatchy High School. Ethnic Studies has actually been around McClatchy High School for about ten years off and on. For seven about, seven of those ten years, I was the only teacher teaching the subject. I was super excited when I heard that the resolution was passed and very anxious to get back to work in teaching that subject. Today, I just want to tell you a little bit about why I enjoy it so much and then I also want to share with you some words of the students about what they like about it and what they've gotten from it. Primarily, I think I enjoy teaching Ethnic Studies because it's real. It's what the kids experience, what they see in the world around them, what they're bringing in from their neighborhoods. It takes their outside knowledge and brings it into the curriculum and validates it. It's extremely rewarding when you have a student who enters the class with, she was, her English language knowledge was fine, but she was not confident in her English language knowledge and she would write, you know, one to two, one to maybe three sentence responses on our weekly writing assignments. And as the class progressed and she realized that we were talking about her life and her experiences in a validating and affirming way, I saw her writing grow from half a page to a full page to flipping it over and continuing it on the back. And there is nothing more rewarding than that. I enjoy Ethnic Studies for a lot of selfish reasons, quite honestly, because in the school, you know, the school day and all that goes on and all the politics and it can be very weighing when you've been doing this for twenty-one years. And it's a breath of fresh air to be able to get these rewards that the students, oops, sorry, that the student experiences present. I don't want to run out of time without sharing some of the student words, so I'm gonna jump to that really quick. These are just random evaluations that they did at the end of the course. It has opened my eyes to things I didn't realize about myself and others. The school district needs to make this a requirement because it equips people with knowledge about social issues, which is beneficial to making society better in the future. It showed me things I wouldn't have learned anywhere else. This class has helped me compare problems of today and how they were created in the past. It really, it's really something you can relate to. It's a more realistic class compared to others. There are more, but I'm out of time. So thank you for your continued support of Ethnic Studies and I look forward to being able to do this for a really long time. Thank you.
Dr. Margarita Berta Avila, followed by Mario Galván.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Margarita Berta Avila. I'm also part of the faculty in the College of Education that's been working with this endeavor, as well as Chair of Ethnic Studies Now Sacramento here. And it's been a great pleasure working with everybody on this team and close to the date of two years ago that this resolution was actually passed. And I want to commend the board for the moral courage that they had at that time. Obviously, we were not foreseeing the political climate that we're in right now, but still to have the continuous moral courage to continue to support Ethnic Studies, especially in this day of age. Whereas, as was shared by our teachers that just spoke and our students that spoke, how the impact of Ethnic Studies, what the impact of Ethnic Studies has made on them every day and not only right now in the current, as current youth, but in the future as adults and them being able to then relay their responsibilities. And so there's an active change that is happening with this. I don't know if you know just the impact that Sacramento City Unified School District has made statewide and nationwide. Every day, or at least every other day, there are calls, emails that we receive asking, how is it that you all did this? How is it that you have been moving forward with the textbooks that were being spoken of, the professional development that has been spoken of, the curriculum that has been developed? And Sacramento City is being looked to, to be able to move their districts forward in the work that needs to be done. And at Sacramento State with our Ethnic Studies and Teacher Education Coalition, we are working as well to make sure that we have the teachers ready to be teaching Ethnic Studies because just to have a social science credential is not enough. There needs to be a background and discipline of Ethnic Studies. So we are committed to that. And we want to continue, lastly, to encourage the district, as you have demonstrated, I'll just take a few more seconds, as you have demonstrated, to support the funding of Ethnic Studies, to support that all ninth graders have access to Ethnic Studies, as well as the teachers continues to have that continuous professional development, and mostly to have intact here in this district, the support staff that is needed to make sure that Ethnic Studies is a success. And Dr. Mark Carnetel has been absolutely fabulous in this process, as well as others that have joined him on his team. Thank you.
Mario Galván, followed by Ramon Diaz and Carolina Flores.
My name is Mario Galván and I am a member of the Ethnic Studies Now Coalition here in Sacramento as well. I'd like to express my pride in Sacramento and the state of California for standing up against the wave of racist hate and anti-immigrant hysteria that's sweeping the nation today. That goes for the governor of the state, legislature, our Sacramento City Council, and the Sacramento City Unified School District. Together with other major school districts such as San Francisco, Los Angeles, and many others, Sacramento is providing an example of leadership to California and the entire nation in the opening up of the academic curriculum to include the histories and culture of ethnic groups that have been and continue to be marginalized in this country. One of the great challenges facing our nation is to recognize the racism that is at the root of much of the inequality and justice and injustice that our society suffers in our political, economic, and educational systems. Educ, excuse me, Ethnic Studies is both a recognition of and a remedy for this problem. I believe that the benefits of Ethnic Studies will be felt not only in the schools, where research has shown its ability to reduce dropout rates and help close the education gap, but also throughout society and that it will be a powerful tool in our struggle toward a just and equal society. I applaud the board and the district for your leadership on Ethnic Studies and look forward to your continuing support. Thank you.
Is Ramon Diaz here? Carolina Flores here?
She left.
Darlene Anderson, followed by Jonathan Tran and Ruben Gonzalez.
What a leap, Ethnic Studies. What are we really talking about? We're talking about the same struggle that we're having in the district. Why would we even do a pilot program? We need a district-wide issue initiative to make sure that all kids have an understanding of who we are as Americans. And for this district to take such a small effort and work and pretend that it's going to be effective by doing it a little bit at a time, it's not. We are looking at catastrophic issues in Sacramento. You're not safe at Safeway, I'm not safe at Safeway. I'd like to go to Safeway and feel that my kid, you know, my, when I have grandkids, they can run out and be safe into the store, but guess what? They can't because we do have to fear shootings. We have to fear what the unknown. What have we actually created? Thirty years of dysfunction, thirty years of not holding staff members accountable for the basic educational rights of all kids. I never really knew a lot about Malcolm X and never really knew, you know, only the things I knew were the things that happened every January, February, Black History Month. That's the only thing I ever really knew. And then I started reading up on it. But then I really understood the struggle when I had children and was fighting for them to have a basic right. Why are we still fighting for basic rights in the public education system when the law demands that our kids attend? But the law does not protect the children when they're here failing. And then, when the district allows staff to gather dysfunctional information about kids who are not participating in the level of growth and development that they should be, well, I don't know how you could do that when you can't read and you can't do basic stuff. And so, you know, this district needs to take on a different perspective when you're talking about Ethnic Studies. We're talking about American history. We all know the struggle. We all understand the struggle, but how we look at it at the school site is differently. And when we only elect one or two people to stand up and say, oh, we're gonna teach, you know, you about your history or your ability, we're not holding this things accountability for all staff members. It has to change in the leadership. The leadership has to be here. It cannot be, you know, one or two teachers defending the right to teach Ethnic Studies. What is that all about? Our history doesn't change. All right, thank you.
Jonathan Tran, Ruben Gonzalez, and Tony Tinker.
Chairman President Wu, Superintendent Bonda, my name is Jonathan Tran. I'm a member of the Ethnic Studies Now Coalition and a proud member of it. I'm a member of the Ethnic Studies Now Coalition and a proud member of it. When this resolution first passed and we met with staff, I think I left that meeting feeling a lot of skepticism, just in terms of the commitment of the district in terms of moving forward. All of that changed with a shift in the leadership within the academic office. So I just want to take a moment to thank the academic office, Dr. Taylor, her entire staff, and in particular, Dr. Canaro, for their leadership in making ethnic studies possible. More than ever, new leadership is needed here in, um, in our country at a time when, ongoing xenophobia, anti-blackness within the API community. Now more than ever, ethnic studies is necessary. I sign out for each of your listeners as board members. Please don't be afraid to brag about the work that you have all done to make ethnic studies a priority. There's a lot of work ahead. We have a lot of doom and gloom in terms of talking about budgets. But this is something we can be proud of here in Sac City Unified. Your leadership made a difference, will continue to make a difference. So thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I'm Ruben Gonzalez. I'm an English teacher at El Grove Unified School District, Florin High School to be exact. I may also serve as the current Chair for the statewide Board of Directors for the Association of Raza Educators, which is an activist group composed of educators, community members, and young people. And I just want to talk about how ethnic studies, it's very important now more than ever to have young people know about themselves and be able to critically read their world and their realities in order to, to make a change within those issues. But also, it's very important that, that it's done right. And you all have done a great job so far in, in supporting the educators at a, at a system level, making sure they have the resources, the funding to do this work. And I just implore you all to continue to do it. How many people had mentioned before, especially now with the vitriol rising across the country and affecting our young people where they're literally scared and traumatized when they go to school because of issues happening in their community? And also how Dr. Berta Avila mentioned is, uh, you all are leaders. So you're known as the quote destination district. You all do a lot of great work with social, emotional learning, home visits, creating that community at home. And you are viewed as leaders across the state and across the nation. And I just wanted to share that El Grove, and specifically, we got leaders at the district level and at different school sites that we're looking at you all as leaders of, of how could we replicate or attempt to replicate this great work that you all are doing and bring it over to El Grove? So thank you all for what you're doing, and I really hope that you all continue this great work. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Tony Tinker.
Thank you for always hearing about ethnic studies. You know, I always come to this board and talk about this great work that's being done. And now you actually get to see all of the great work that's being done. But, you know, I was part of corridor 65 when it first started, and I was able to see the impact that it had on Sacramento at a time when I was very young in college and just starting out. And the impact that it had on the community in Sacramento and all that it served. And now looking at what it's grown to in ethnic studies and what this board has done for Sacramento, to be able to say, we have an ethnic studies textbook, we have an ethnic studies course that is throughout, slowly moving throughout our district. And it is so vital and so important when you have students who look like me and are able to come back to this board and talk to you the way that I have been able to talk to you over the course of these few months. I want to continue to encourage you to push forward with Dr. Taylor, with Dr. Canaro, with all of the people at Sac State, to continue to fund this work and continue to make sure that it doesn't get lost in the three-year funding and the LCAP, that it continues to move forward so that students look like me that come back and take places that we all can retire and say, we're raising young people to look like us. We're raising generations of Sacramentoans to speak for us. I've been going up and down the state and looking at CCEE and working with LCAP and working with students and working at the Capitol to talk about the different things that are happening around ethnic studies. We are looking, being looked at as a destination school. We are being looked at as a destination district, and I want to continue to see that happen. So as we move forward and we talk about budgeting, I want to make sure that we continue to keep in mind that this is something that the coordinators and all of this work continues to be funded. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Member Vang.
So I just want to take this time to thank Dr. Canaro and Dr. Iris for all the hard work that you've done to really push the pilot, uh, pilot program. I also want to thank Dr. Mark from Sac State, our Sacramento State partners, and community groups like HIP and Ethnic Studies Now for working so hard to get this pilot off the ground and running. Um, you know, growing up in the public school system myself, I didn't learn about my own history, and it wasn't until I went to college that I had exposure to ethnic studies. And I read one line about the role involvement in the US War. And in that moment, it was really transformative for me because it meant that my community and that my story mattered. And it was really then where I became an activist, a community organizer, and really began to really rethink my own lived experience. Ethnic studies gave me the tool to articulate, the rhetoric, the tools to articulate my own lived experience and be able to really fight for my community needs. It's absolutely critical that, you know, we institutionalize ethnic studies in all of our high schools by 2020. I think, you know, we've heard from our students tonight that, um, just the exposure to counter stories and oftentimes neglected stories can really begin to empower our students, right? Really begin to help them humanize, to love themselves and their families and their communities. And I know that a few of you spoke about, you know, the current political climate that we're in right now and how important it is more than ever to help our students become critical thinkers and for them to really learn the importance of race, ethnicity, location, identity, and how that really impacts the world that we live in. I do have two questions, one for Dr. Canaro. Can we ask questions right now? Yeah. Um, I, so on one of your slide for the Ethnic Studies 2017, you identified a few numbers for, of the high school, and I wanted to know how were those numbers identified? And how did you actually, what was the selection process? I know you spoke about looking for, you know, faculty that had a social studies background. And so I'm just thinking ahead in terms of, do we even have, do we have capacity, right? Are, you know, do we have the teachers that are ready for this rollout for next year?
Yes, so if you're referring to this slide, Ms. Vang?
So it's slide, I think slide 13. So if you go forward for the numbers, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So every school in this, on this list here has had an administration and a teacher force that has opted in?
Okay.
Meaning that everyone at these, at these sites are, are willing and able to be taught. What, what that means though is that they're going to be, um, having to be developed by this team here with the 60 hours of professional development that we're offering that I believe is critical to every teacher regardless of the background that they have.
Okay. And then this second question could be for you or maybe Harado. You know, I think, I want to ensure that we really commit funding to, to ethnic studies. And I wanted to know, just looking at the rollout of the, the number of teachers and how many students serve, do we have an estimate on what that would cost, the school district?
Yeah, we have a couple of years that we're looking at. The next year is going to cost about $189,000 rounded up. That's, that'll serve about 1,500 students. The year after that is roughly about another $100,000 and another that, another $100,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think of moderately low price to empower about 3,500,000 or 3,500 students a, a year.
Okay, thank you.
Member Minnick.
So first, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking on this and giving us this update. You know, it's very inspiring and exciting. You know, I was, I was thinking as people were talking, at, at first I kind of thought I agreed with some folks when they said, you know, now more than ever, we need this. And then I thought, no, we, we always needed this. We needed this in the 50s when that lady was talking about the 50s. We needed it in the 80s when I was in high school. We need it now. It's just unfortunate, it took us this long to figure it out. And so now that we have, you know, this is our, our opportunity to embrace it, and we can see just the kind of impact this can have on all of us and understanding ourselves and understanding our friends. And, um, it's just so exciting for me to see this is building. I wish, you know, that we could build it faster. And I know things are sometimes slow, slow to develop, but I'm, I'm excited at, at what I'm seeing. So I'm really proud of you all for, for getting us this far. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Minnick. And I want to say thank you as well. It's been a long time since Professor Mark and I initiating this ethnic studies programs at UC Berkeley. I mean, we were there at its birth. And it's taken a long time to bring it to our high schools. But I would share with you that for me, anecdotally, having taken ethnic studies so many, many years ago, it created pride in myself and it created understanding and appreciation of others. And that goes, coincides with our social, emotional learning. So as we move forward, I truly believe that while we're teaching socio-emotional learning in our classrooms, people need to, the stu, our students will be able to understand and appreciate each other. And hopefully, after a generation, we will no longer have strife in Sacramento. That is my dream, that's my desire, and I think that we're helping to fill those pieces to make that a reality. So I want to thank everybody for their efforts, and I hope that we continue and building, continue to build this program. Moving on now to item 11.2. Before I, as they're coming up to the podium, parent-teacher home visit end of year update, I would entertain a motion to extend the clock to some defined time. And let me suggest, let, let me, let me suggest 11:30.
I'll motion it to 11:30.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll be judging you.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries. Thank you. Assistant Area Superintendent.
Okay, I, I guess I'm the first one to speak tonight. So I, first off, just want to say that I have the pleasure tonight of introducing the Parent-Teacher Home Visit Project. I have sat on the Sacramento-based parent, it's no longer project, I gotta erase that from my vocabulary, the home visit. I sat on the Sacramento-based board for two years and now have been able to sit on the national board and watch it grow. And locally, our, um, the, um, the pro, God, I need to really erase that from my vocabulary. The parent-teacher home visits are locally in a 42 of our schools and engaging families throughout our district and increasing student outcomes. Because of the local efforts that we've done here in Sacramento over the last 20 years, we are now national and doing work in 19 states. That's very, very impressive. I had the opportunity prior to becoming a board member and my, as my daughter was in junior high school, my, her junior high school teacher, one of them, was one of the recipients of being able to start the program at the school. So I was the PTA president at the time, and they thought they could use me as a guinea pig. So I got the phone call that they wanted to come. And the first thing in my mind was, what did she do? Because I didn't know what this was about, right? And so when they came to my house and they explained to me, I was just flabbergasted and just amazed on what they came for and what they wanted to know about my family and what they wanted to know about my daughter, about her hopes and dreams and what she wanted to be when she grew up. And now, as a board member, I've had the opportunity to go out on several home visits with some of the teachers in my area and have just been amazed at the work that they're doing and the relationships that they're building. And then bringing that on to the AP, is APPT events at the schools, and I've attended those and I'm always just amazed by the work that, that is being done. Because of the impact that we've done here, I'm very proud to announce that Sac City School District is host, is the hosting school district and is one of the biggest sponsors of the 2017 Parent-Teacher Conference this year to be held October 26th through the 28th here in downtown Sacramento at the Sheraton Hotel. And I know at the last board meeting, I invited each of you to that and asked that you sponsor. So I'll be reaching out to you. But I do encourage everyone to attend, and as we get more information, we'll put it out. But I believe that you'll have some information in your presentation as well, correct? Great, well, I'll hand it over to Tumua.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. Thank you for the introductory remarks for this very special relationship we have with our parent-teacher home friends, parent-teacher home visit friends here tonight. The bulk of our presentation will actually be shared jointly with Lisette La May, who represents our parent-teacher home visit 501(c)(3) profit here in Sacramento. We also have here on our presenting panel here, Mr. David Fisher, representing SETA. And then we also have Mr. Corey Jones here, who currently is a principal, but is one of our very beginning teachers who also conducted the home visit. So I'm actually going to turn over the presentation to the professionals up here. Lisette.
Thank you too. Good evening. So much has already been said, so I'm just going to jump right in. I'll just repeat that I am Lisette La May. I do work as the home visit coordinator for the national nonprofit parent-teacher home visits in Sac City. What I want to emphasize, since you brought up the conference, Christina, is that, and I've heard tonight, several things lifted up as positives that have been pioneered right here in this district. Well, home visits is one of those things. And it began here in Sacramento back in 1996, as Tumua mentioned, as a collaborative effort with our Sacramento-area congregations together, people who are with us tonight as well. This being the 20th anniversary of the, of the beginning of this strategy. When it started, it started as a grassroots community organizing effort where folks wanted to, they were concerned about what was happening in their community and at their school and Sacramento-area congregations together, stepped in, got them organized, and helped them put together two years of focus groups, which then led to the launching of the Parent-Teacher Home Visit Project with eight schools in 1998. And as Christina mentioned, it's grown by leaps and bounds, just as the ethnic studies folks lifted up that, what you're doing is being looked at by other districts, so is home visits. And so in those 19 states, including Washington DC, this model that was created right here in Sacramento has been adopted and adapted and is being used and lifted up as one of the highest, um, impact family engagement strategies. So something else for us to be super proud of, and at that conference, I expect us to be there in numbers as the pioneering force behind this strategy. So I want to give a little end of year update around parent-teacher home visits and academic parent-teacher teams. And for those of you that don't know, the academic parent-teacher teams are family-style meetings that are being hosted at least three times a year by teachers at 13 of our elementary sites. And it's a way to take a traditional parent-teacher conference and flip it on its head to make it more engaging and more interactive and to focus on a specific skill that families can then go back and work with their students at home on. So as Christina also mentioned, we have 14 participating home visit sites. Those 14, 42 sites, excuse me, have conducted approximately 3,400 relationship-building home visits this school year alone. We have 13 elementary schools that are participating in academic parent-teacher team meetings, and they've been able to reach approximately 1,400 families through their academic parent-teacher team meetings, building the efficacy of our families to engage in those academic conversations with us classroom teachers around the academic and social, emotional success of their students. I will say that all the funds that have been allocated for home visits and APPT are slated to be used by the end of the school district because our teachers and school staff and our families understand that this relationship building is important and it's something that we, it's a strategy that we employ. and it's something that we, it's a strategy that we employ year after year to continue to build those relationships. So speaking of academic parent-teacher teams, I'm going to ask Mr. Jones to please come up and speak about the impact that that strategy has had for his staff, students, and families at Earl Warren.
Good evening, everybody. All right, let's try that again. Good evening, everybody. All right. So Earl Warren has been doing the academic parent-teacher team meetings for several years. This is my second site that I've been at that has participated in this initiative. But specifically at Earl Warren, it's probably created three main opportunities that I think about. It's created opportunities for the staff to discuss the Common Core expectations with parents and families. I know you're all aware that the expectations we have out of Common Core were, in some instances, a great leap from what we had before with the old standards. There was a lot of confusion about that. And this provides an opportunity to create some dialogue around that and some teamwork around those things. It also created opportunities to build community between classrooms, grade levels, the school, and students and families around positive student academic and social emotional outcomes. So once again, getting people together, talking about how we can support each other, how we can support our students, and how we can support families, how we can support our staff members to boost student achievement in those areas. And since the Earl Warren teachers have decided to conduct their academic parent-teacher team meetings as grade levels, they don't do them individually as classrooms. They do them as grade levels together. This is also another opportunity for teachers to collaborate and align their expectations and supports. So oftentimes, teachers work in silos. This is another opportunity that teachers get to work together in support of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Personally, I was able to attend the Parent-Teacher Home Visit National Conference in Denver about five or six years ago. And that's where I learned about academic parent-teacher teams. And I had the opportunity to bring that back and pilot it when I was a teacher at Floyd. And so with that, I'd like to talk a little bit more about this national conference. So in 2016, we had a group of 25, approximately 25 Sac City staff attend the, attend the conference. And of those 25, approximately eight of them were presenters in different workshops, presenting on everything from how home visits, building relationships, supports their academic parent-teacher teamwork, to trauma and how we use our relationship building to address, to address those things in our classroom. And so I just want to emphasize again, it's the 20th anniversary of this strategy that was pioneered right here in Sacramento. I saw somebody do that earlier. I thought I'd do it.
That's my job.
So just to say that again, because we are the pioneering district for this strategy that is now being used in 19 different states, I'm extending this invitation again to all that on October 26th through the 28th of this year, that we show up in force for our conference. And we will have experts from right here in our own district presenting again in various workshops there. One final thing that I'd like to touch on before I have David come up is that we are in the very beginning stages of a national evaluation that is going to be a three-part study that's going to look at mindset shifts. This first study that's happening, we're looking at mindset shifts. So I've heard a lot tonight about bias, unconscious bias, implicit bias, assumptions that we make about each other. So we want to find out if this strategy of getting to know one another on a human level causes some of those things to shift for us. We're also going to discuss the need for fidelity to this model because it is a very specific model of home visiting. And we're going to look, later look for outcomes for families, students, and staff conducting and receiving home visits. We have three participating sites, Leah Tata, Floyd, Fern Bacon, and Luther Burbank. And the first set of data around the mindset shifts is going to be presented during the national conference, again, October 26th through the 28th of this year. So be looking for that. This practice has been sustained for 20 years, not only in, right here in our district, but again, it's being lifted up and used and adapted across the country. And so Mr. Fisher is going to come up and talk about how that all started and why it's been sustained for so long.
Evening again. David Fisher, as you know, Vice President of SETA, but also one of the founding teachers for the Parent-Teacher Home Visits, as it's called now. I just can't believe it's been 20 years, for one. So it just seems like a few years ago, when Sacramento Act organizer, Mr. Jim Kennedy, came to talk to a few of our teachers about, you know, what our experiences were. And we had some focus groups with parents. And this idea based on the one-on-one organizing concept of just meeting face-to-face with somebody. It's gone from there to our pilot that had eight schools to the, you know, the big national model that you've heard about today. So 20 years, you know, lots happened. Of course, the standards have come and gone a couple of different times, right? We've had, of course, curriculum come and go. We're getting new curriculum again. Management comes and goes, superintendents come and go. It's just part of life, right? But what's kind of stayed all this time and expanded is this parent-teacher home visits. And I think it's for a couple of reasons. And number one, it's about relationships. I mean, this is about connecting teachers with families and valuing each other's expertise and being coeducators of the students. Not a lot of education-type reforms and programs are really built on relationships. So I think that's the main thing. It just, it just works. The other thing, I think, the way it started, as a grassroots effort, as a collaborative, the bottom-up site level, the community level, with resources primarily at the community and the school level, and then built up from there. I think that's another thing that helps sustain it. And when we go out and do trainings, we talk about how important that is, that you get the buy-in at the local level. In fact, we, at SETA, have used the model to develop proposals, in particular, restorative practice proposal. Our hope is that the district join with us not only to continue the Parent-Teacher Home Visit Project, but to expand it to the opportunity for other teachers and sites, as we've proposed, and also to replicate this model in other areas. So that's my part. I'm up to, Ms. Mua up.
And before we close and take questions, I don't know if everybody knows, Board of Education members, our Sacramento Board of Education members and our members of the public know that our Executive Director of the National Parent-Teacher Home Visit, Ms. Carrie Rose, is going on after 20 years. And Carrie has really dedicated the last 20 years, her life, at the expense of her children, her family. We know this because we've seen it. And, gosh, I shouldn't, I probably shouldn't have said that.
I made the announcement at the last board meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, Carrie Rose is going on, and she's in the audience. And I just would like for us to give her a big round of applause and honor her. We also have in our audience our new National Executive Director, Gina Martinez-Cetty, who is also local to us from Sacramento. And we are thrilled that the ED will still live in our great city. So I'd like all of us to welcome Gina Martinez-Cetty. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to you, Vice President Wu.
Mr. Varios, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have three public comments. Lenaya Coleman, April Ibarra, Teresa Flores.
Good late evening, once again. So April Ibarra, and my public comment is going to be that home visits has been transformational in my life personally. I don't have the time to share my story with you, but I would love to, reach out to me, or I can reach out to you. Anyways, my children go to Oak Ridge Elementary School, which is a school where I also attended as a child and had some very not-so-good experiences. And because of that, I had the mentality that the public education system was not something willing to work with me. And because of a home visit, I saw that, that that wasn't true. And so a teacher came into my home and told me that she wanted to know what, I'm sorry, what my hopes and dreams were for my child, who, as I mentioned, I have an English language learner, was way below grade level after sharing what my hopes and dreams were. And they are that she can succeed, and not just her, but the kids in our community can succeed and not be told that they can't because of their economic status or because of their language barrier. And her teacher worked with me, and my daughter was at reading level at the end of the school year. In combination with APPT, which at Oak Ridge, we call EFTAD, Family Teacher Academic Teams, I learned how to support my child around Common Core. And now both, I have two children now in third and fifth grade, and to continue to support them in the home so that it's reflecting what they're learning in the classroom and they're not losing, but they're actually adding on to. It's fun, family-based, and that is also how I was able to become an advocate in the district. And as I've mentioned, I like to work with you, not against. I believe that we're a team and that all happened because of a home visit. I have been a trained, a parent trainer with them for the past four years. And I'm grateful to say that in January, they offered me a position to work with them. And I now serve as the California Hub Coordinator. And so I get to work with schools all across California. And that's my public comment on parent-teacher home visits.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Flores. So as you probably noticed, we switched up all the order because that's what organizers do. And I'm an organizer with Sacramento Act. I was not here, actually, 20 years ago. I was actually just coming to the US at that point. But, you know, as you've heard, Sacramento Act was one of the organizations that helped found this project through listening to parents and working with teachers and working with the district. So I'm very proud to represent Sacramento Act tonight and just commend the tremendous work that Parent-Teacher Home Visit Project has done in the district, again, in collaboration with SETA and the Board and the district. I think it also really shows the importance and what community organizing can do. You know, I was sharing with one of our leaders, it's incredible to see that something that community organizing, those really grassroots, that was really something from the parents and from those, you know, that were struggling to support their kids, something that started from there and has now grown to a national model and a national organization. And it somehow seems to come full circle. We now ended up at the same building where Parent-Teacher Home Visit is. So it's great, again, to just share that history and share that work and overall that, you know, love and importance for, for the kids. I think, again, it also, it's been said already, but I want to highlight the importance of relationships. You know, Parent-Teacher Home Visit was founded on one of ACT's core principles about that communities thrive when there are relationships. And in this case, schools, you know, will continue to thrive when teachers, parents, and students are in a relationship.
Thank you.
My name is Lenaya Coleman, and I'm a member of SAC Act. But as I said earlier, I'm also a parent of a child at William Land. And as a parent, I'm really grateful for this history, this past collaboration that between the SETA, the district, SAC Act, that birthed this from the bottom up, maybe not movement, but like project, this, this thing. I'm really grateful that it exists today. I'm grateful that it continues to support and continues to help form relationships. And I'm hopeful that we can, we can emulate our past and that we can come together and collaborate and create good new things.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for your time. Are there any questions?
Member Pritchett.
Of course I do. No. Just to kind of wrap things up, so just so everyone is aware, I know we were using the APPT acronym, and not everyone really knows what that is. And so can you just kind of give us a roundabout, like, because I've witnessed it, and, but can you maybe just tell everyone what that is?
So it is a fancy acronym. It stands for Academic Parent-Teacher Teams. And again, they're family-oriented, family-style meetings, group meetings, that teachers host in their classrooms to go over a specific dataset, data point with families to show how the students are doing as a class. And then for families to see how their student is doing with that, it's too late, particular skill. And then they teach them a fun and easy game right there in the, in the classroom setting that they can then take home and practice with their students in hopes of improving that skill. And then they meet again six weeks later. They set SMART goals, meet again to follow up to see if playing those games and activities is helping. And what we're finding, anecdotally and through data collecting across those 13 sites, is that it's absolutely helping. And part of that, again, is the relationship piece, but it's also building the confidence in our families that they can have those academic conversations with us and not feel intimidated. And we just come together and, for the good of the student, around their academics. So it starts with a relationship, and then you build on it with the APPT.
And I think, most importantly, it helps the parent understand. I witnessed teachers explaining to parents how to teach their own kids at home, right? And how to help them with their homework where they didn't know how to help before. So, you know, I, to my colleagues, if you have not been on, on a home visit or been to an APPT meeting, I highly, highly encourage it. Reach out to Lisette. I'm sure she'd be more than happy to set something up.
So I was just going to say, Michael and Mai have already let it be known that they want to go, so I have teachers working on that.
Yay, okay. I'm so happy to hear that. So I was going to tell a really long story, but because of late hour, I'll shorten it up. So, you know, there was a student at Rosemont High School, and his mom had come to me and told me how he was having trouble with the teacher. And he used the word hate, like, I can't hate this teacher. I can't stand this teacher, right? And over the summer, she got called for a home visit. And it just so happens, that was the teacher who showed up at the house. And they dreaded that meeting for, like, they kept on calling me, like, do we have to do this? I'm like, you don't have to do anything, but I highly recommend you do it. After that meeting, minutes, minutes after, I got the phone call of like, thank God he came to our house because we have a whole new understanding of this teacher. And the next year, the kid ended up having the same teacher and succeeded in his class. And that, to me, said it all. I was like, this is why we do this, right?
The power is in getting to know one another, moving away from assumptions.
Exactly, exactly. So as we move forward, and, you know, with our next two agenda items, we're talking about budget and LCAP. I highly would like to, you know, urge the Board of just thinking of programs that make such an impact in our district and think about how we can grow these programs. Because I think that in the high school levels, we probably could use, well, I think at all levels. But I think we should probably also think about at the high school level of how we can grow those type of programs. Because these are the kids that probably need to see their teachers outside of the school campus rather than inside and build those relationships.
I'm biased. I'll say it's all kids, but I get what you're saying.
I agree. I agree. Yeah. No, I think it's all kids, too. So, you know, what I'd like you to do is maybe just send the Board a list of all the schools that are participating. And maybe how many visits, I don't know if that's easily, readily to you. If you could just send it to us, that way we can help encourage our schools to sign up. And then we can make decisions in the budget process to help grow these programs. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you as well. I want to share with my colleagues that Assistant Area Superintendent Caras had a presentation at the last Council on Great City School Conference. at the last Council on Great City School Conference. And, um, she shanghaied me into participating with her because I wasn't prepared for it. But I want to share with you that throughout the country, uh, in our, um, for those urban school districts who are members of the Council on Great City Schools, they were really enthusiastic about the presentation and the stories we told about, um, going on these, uh, parent teacher home visits. And they just, I, I think that they were just enthusiastic about getting it into theirs, into their school districts. So I want to thank you for your work. Uh, congratulations on 20 years of doing this work. And, um, may we all be at the conference in October. So, thank you.
And Carrie, you better keep in touch.
You're not riding off into the sunset, are you, Carrie?
I actually have no interest in that, but I am delighted that she was there tonight.
Thank you. Moving on, we have to, uh, continue our, um, agenda. We're on 11.3 second draft of the LCAP 2017 to 2020. Ooh, looks like a three-year program. Elliot, Cathy, Liberty, and Sarah.
Uh, good evening. Second Vice President Wu, Board Members and Superintendent Banda, my name is Elliot Lopez, Chief Information Officer, and I'm joined by Cathy Morrison, our LCAP SIPSA Coordinator, Liberty Van Natten, our Program Evaluation Coordinator, Sarah Petrowski, our Student Outcomes Coordinator. And tonight, we are joined by Dr. David Baker, who is the COO of the Sacramento Children's Home and a member of our LCAP Parent Advisory Committee. Tonight, we are here to share the second draft of the 2017 to 20 LCAP. We will discuss the process employed to revise this document and provide a high-level overview of the feedback received from our stakeholders. We will talk about some of the changes incorporated in this latest iteration and will share the process leading to finalization and adoption of the LCAP later this month. As you recall, we released the first draft of the LCAP on May 4th, and that this year, for the first time, we are providing a second iteration of the draft for additional analysis of stakeholder input. In the interim, we've engaged our community bargaining partners and staff for feedback, and we've worked with our Business Services Department to obtain updated fiscal information that we've integrated into the second draft. Cathy will now provide you with additional details regarding our activities and the valuable information that we have received.
Good evening, Board Member Pritchett. Other board members, and Superintendent Banda.
Those are here.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm Cathy Morrison, your LCAP and SIPSA Coordinator. Briefly, this slide represents the engagement activities with our stakeholder drafts in the first, um, draft LCAP. Since the release of the first draft, we've been engaged in many activities to ensure that the LCAP reflects our priorities and best reflects the vision and mission of the district. We have received the three-year fiscal projections affirmed since the governor's May revision, and we collaborated with the Sacramento County Office of Education for additional feedback. This year, though, we are really excited to have launched the most comprehensive survey regarding our district's culture and climate. To date, we have received more than five times as many responses from students than in the past. So we're at almost 10,000, and it's still going. For the first time this year, we have surveyed parents and teachers. In particular, we'd like to acknowledge and thank SETA for their support of the teacher survey this year. The school climate survey results for all groups will be included in the final iteration of the LCAP. The student results will also be reflected in the California School Dashboard next fall. All of these survey results will inform our practice and our planning for Goal Two. Liberty will now provide you with details on the LCAP Feedback Survey.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Banda. I'm Liberty Van Natten, Program Evaluation Coordinator. I'm here to share with you the results of this year's LCAP Feedback Survey. This survey was provided in Spanish and English and was designed to collect stakeholder feedback on the specific actions and services for each of the four goals in the first draft of the 2017-20 LCAP. Through collaboration with our Communications Office and Family and Community Engagement Department, the survey was shared on the district's Facebook page and website, on individual school websites, and through text messages to families, and also paper surveys were shared at family engagement activities across the district. In total, we received 526 responses, 483 in English and 43 in Spanish. This chart represents the response rates by respondent groups. As you can see, teachers were one of the biggest, was, was the biggest respondents' group, followed closely by parents or guardians. We believe that these responses are not entirely reflective of our audience, and we will need to focus on improving responses from underrepresented stakeholder groups in the future. This chart represents the response rates by race, ethnicity. And now I'm going to share with you some of the response details of the LCAP Feedback Survey. More detailed analyses of these results will be provided to board members in a board communication. Respondents were asked to state whether they agreed, were unsure, or disagreed that the actions and services for each goal should remain a priority and focus for the district. Here you can see the percent of agreement for each action and service in Goal One, with an average of 76% agreement. Here you can see the percent of agreement for each action and service in Goal Two, with an average of 70%. Here you can see the percent of agreement for each action and service in Goal Three, with an average of 65%. And finally, you can see the percent of agreement for each action and service in Goal Four, with an average of 69%. What these analyses show is that our stakeholders generally agree that the actions and services in our LCAP will move our district's goals and priorities forward. So in addition to the feedback that I just reviewed, our team also analyzed the 126 additional open-ended comments provided by respondents. After we individually read and coded each comment in the survey, we convened as a group to norm our themes. These three themes were the most frequently cited in responses. Forty-four respondents' comments referenced targeting funds to schools and specific services and programs such as class size reduction, counselors, and the arts. Twenty-seven respondents referenced the need to focus efforts on communication, which includes parent and community outreach and customer service at the district office and sites. And 25 respondents referenced the need for greater accountability, transparency, and trust in the district.
So as we have done each year, we will publish the detailed analysis, uh, from the survey on our district's website, including all the open-ended comments received. And in this slide, we just wanted to, uh, share a few of the rich and meaningful comments that we received from our stakeholders about the LCAP. In addition to the LCAP survey, we received feedback from the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee in the form of comments provided to the superintendent. These comments were also provided to each board member tonight, in addition to the comments from the English Learner Parent Advisory Committee. David Baker is here tonight to speak about the process that the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee used. David.
Thank you. And, uh, good evening, uh, Second Vice President Wu and Board Members and Superintendent Banda. Uh, as mentioned, I'm, uh, Dr. David Baker from the Sacramento Children's Home, I'm the Chief Operating Officer there. We serve, it's our 150th anniversary this year, we're serving about 7,000 kids and about 4,500 families, the majority of those kids and families in the SAC City School District, and the majority of them, obviously, in the county. We do provide some actual, uh, services in some of the SAC City Schools through an MHSA grant, so, um, so I, I do appreciate the opportunity to be involved in the LCAP. And then, talking about the process, um, we, uh, the LCAP, we had an opportunity to meet monthly and, and get a lot of, gain a lot of information and knowledge about where the funds are meant to go and what the target populations were and what the goals were, and, and that was really appreciated. We had an opportunity to review the draft, um, together, and then we also had a chance to, we, we created a, a Google forum to, to input everybody's comments and then, uh, follow that up with meetings, uh, to, to aggregate those comments and decide, uh, to focus on which ones were the, the most important ones to include in, in the, in the feedback. And so, um, I would, as a committee member, I was grateful, and I, I know many of my committee members are grateful, to provide, uh, to have the opportunity to engage in the process and to provide feedback. And, and we hope and trust in that you guys will take the feedback and really see some of the themes around, um, evaluation, some of the themes around outcomes, and, and, and making sure that, uh, we're really targeting the populations that we're intended to target. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, David. The second draft LCAP includes these changes. Highlights include greater detail on ethnic studies, safe haven, and a new grant-funded program to improve our district's attendance and chronic absenteeism rates. Finally, as you see, we plan to provide improved communication for our families who want better access to data and school site information. As you've heard, this is an expressed need in our community. We have already initiated the translation of the individual school site plans, and we are creating collateral material such as our infographic in threshold languages that help to summarize and demystify the LCAP. While annually, we have translated the final LCAP, tonight, we heard there is a need to translate the LCAP in draft form, and we will proceed with that immediately.
We now have a short period of time in which to complete our analysis of feedback and the data captured during the engagement period. Our cabinet will meet to review this information and to discuss any additional adjustments that are required. In addition, the superintendent will respond to comments provided by the parent advisory committees before the public hearing on June 15th. The June 15th public hearing will be the final opportunity for the community to weigh in on the plan. And the district will make any final adjustments between the public hearing and June 28th, at which point the board will be presented with the final version for adoption. This concludes our presentation, uh, and we'll take any questions or comments at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Varios?
Yeah, we have, uh, three, I'm sorry, six public comments. If you could line up, please. Marissa Maldonado, Heidi Lush, Azariah and Jennifer, Darlene Anderson, Tony Tinker, and
Good evening, board. Part of me wants to ask you to, like, stand and shake it all out, but I won't do that. Um, I am Marissa Maldonado, I'm the Director of Operations with City of Refuge. We run the SHINE program at six of the Title I schools here. We are at Bret Hart Elementary currently and have finished programming with American Legions, Pacific Elementary, Isidore Cohen Elementary, Willsey Wood Middle School, and who am I missing? I think that might be it. No, I said Legions. Anyways, um, we are here to advocate for SHINE as you guys start to make some big decisions on where funding and, um, your priorities are going to be for this next, when this next draft of the LCAP is finished. Under the last LCAP, there were 10 priorities that you, as a school district, identified. There were two that we specifically chose to focus on by way of the SHINE program. Those were pupil engagement and school climate. Goal Two was to address areas of need concerning at-risk students through expanded learning opportunities that fostered student engagement by putting in place positive behavior intervention, support systems, and community partners who would work directly with the school staff, students, and parents. That's exactly what we did through SHINE and through City of Refuge. With our small 30,000, not only did we serve our, each of our schools for six weeks, and I would say went above and beyond what we had even promised to do to begin with, um, but provided supportive services and continue to provide supportive services. We're meeting with principals throughout the week when there are girls who need, um, some extra mentoring, when they just need more hands on deck. We are meeting with parents when there's intervention needed in the home. We are just making ourselves available. We have after-school programs that we offer for free and very specifically targeting those girls who went through our SHINE program to be involved in our sisterhood program. Um, I have used all my time, I'm just going to say a couple more things. Um, the, the other thing was, it was the desire of the school district that parents, family, and community stakeholders would become more fully engaged as partners. That's exactly what we did through the SHINE program and would like to continue to do. We, um, garnered some surveys that I'm going to hand out, and I'm going to pass the mic to my colleague Heidi.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Heidi Lush, I'm the Creative Director at City of Refuge as well as SHINE. Uh, we recently passed out a survey to all the administration that we had the privilege of working with this year, um, and we wanted to share those responses with you all. Um, we understand that, uh, the data and raw numbers the school district is hoping to see can take years to accumulate. Since this is only our second year, um, and not all of that information is yet available to us, but we are confident because of the responses that we have received and SHINE's effectiveness at the schools. Um, so just to read a couple, there was Julia Del Agua, the interim Assistant Principal at Pacific Elementary School. She said, "For all the girls, we had a decrease in behavioral issues in our yard, especially our sixth-grade group. One example, I had a student who was very upset, and instead of hitting another girl, which she admitted she wanted to do, she came to me for help so she could work through her anger and not get in trouble. The program has also allowed girls to speak up and ask for help instead of trying to handle issues on their own, which before, it would have turned into a fight. I also had another student whose mom is on drugs and homeless, living on the streets. She was willing to be vulnerable and open and to talk to me, though she was very upset. She was looking for help with her feelings." Uh, Chase Tafoya, as well, the Assistant Principal at Willsey Wood Middle School, he said that these students have become more engaged and have refrained from misconduct, namely drama due to poor peer relationships. Additionally, SHINE participants feel supported and happier because the program has engaged them, whereas previously, they did feel disconnected from school. And we encourage you all to look at the rest of them, um, on your own time if you can. But with us tonight, we have girls who graduated from our SHINE program from Willsey Wood, and they wanted to share about their experiences.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, and, um, I graduated from the program called SHINE. Um, I attend to Willsey Wood Middle School, and, well, last year was a really rough year for me. And they came into my school and like, I, I had really like, gave up on everything. And till they came, and they motivate me to really do everything, they made me to be someone I wanted to be in life, that I wasn't trying to be. But if there was one thing I would want to keep, is that group. Because us girls, I feel like we go through more stuff, well, we do, we go through mostly a lot of stuff. And I just like, they, they look at you and they see what you're going through, and that's a group that, like, I would want you guys to keep. Because I would, I know they would help a lot of females that are going through stuff.
Um, hello, everyone. I'm Azariah Gibson, and I attend Willsey Wood Middle School, and I'm a seventh grader. And I would recommend SHINE, like, to all the Sacramento schools because SHINE is a good program, and like, they can relate to us because they've been kids before, and they like, they know what we go through. And, um, I also like SHINE because, like, when we tell them stuff, they don't like, really judge us, you know? Like, because they've been a kid like how we've been a kid before. they've been a kid like how we've been a kid before. And since I've been in the Sacramento City District, SHINE is one of the best programs that I've been to. Yeah.
I allowed to use her last minute? We were able to serve over 500 girls unlike, or who aren't here. We were able to grab two of the girls who spoke at a town hall meeting when y'all were looking for your next superintendent. And with those 500 girls, we do our best to continue maintaining relationship, both with depth and pointing them towards those things that you guys have already put in place. You have counselors, you have faculty and staff at each of your schools who care deeply about each of these girls, their successes. And our goal through SHINE is not to just, you know, take all the glory in seeing these girls' successes, but really partner with y'all in making sure that they, they're not dropping out, making sure that they are achieving their goals because we see each of them as a unique individual, and, and they feel that. And it was really great to, you know, have these girls here until 11 o'clock who just believe in this and wouldn't let us take them home. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I believe our next speaker is Darlene Anderson, followed by Tony Tinker and Karavu.
The Local Control Accountability Act was created to ensure that local control happened. What does that look like for the African-American community? I don't think that they even understand what local control is about. They don't understand the local control funding formula, and they're not talking about the willful defiance issues that is really affecting the African-American community. And I'm talking about the former African-American slaves in America, not the Africans that come across the shores, not the Jamaicans, not the other blacks. I'm talking about the blacks that were a part of this country for a long time, who are not being educated. I'm talking about how the community outreach actually happens. It doesn't. And so, you know, we talked about, what, tonight? We talked about ethnic studies and the importance of it. Well, what about respecting ethnic people when they come up here and actually share concern with the data that you know is true and that you're still not discussing? I really don't understand the who, what, when, why, and how it happens for African-American people. I know what happened for me is I was there all the time to oversee the education of my children. Most people don't understand that. So their kids are not getting a basic education. Surveys? How many people are technology literate in Sacramento? How many actually responses are you getting from the surveys? Why allow staff? Staff is the only reason that, you know, we're allocating the dollars, because they're overseeing the money. But how much engagement are they actually doing with human people? I've not filled out one of the surveys, because quite frankly, I don't think surveys are a way to determine services. I think school site councils and the conversation at the school site about what's actually happening, measuring how wonderful the program SHINE is for those schools that are getting those services makes a difference. But what doesn't make a difference is to have people come and talk about the LCAP process when I know that it was supposedly majorly impact social, emotional, learning, whatever that is. Well, all I see that is right now is plantation implementation of behavior modification. Because on the plantation, when slaves didn't act right, they got beat. Here, they don't get a basic education, and they are on the street for 20 to 30 years. And I'm telling you, this behavior has to stop. We're just talking about public dollars, tax dollars that are being generated from everybody. How is it working in our district? It's not working for all kids. Thank you, and good night.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Banda and members of the board. My name is Laura Vu. I am a member of the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee. I have nieces and nephews who attend the Susan B. Anthony Johnstone Luther Bro Bank. And though this is my first year serving on the LCAP Committee, being organizer with HIP, and having participated in the district's LCAP process from the beginning has really helped me stay informed and as a participant throughout the year. So tonight, I'm going to give you some pointers on how to understand the committee's feedback on the draft. We hope that as you review the draft yourself, you take into consideration on how the LCAP PAC Committee critiqued each nine item under all the goals. This year, we decided to do a combination of recommendations, questions, and concerns. And whether or not you may agree or disagree with our recommendations or share the same questions and concerns that you ensure, it is addressed in the final version. We've been very conscious that this is a three-year plan, and we were really critical at some of the metrics and indicators. Just to name a few, age requirements, yield reclassification rates, dropout, suspension, and graduation rates. And while it seems that the draft has very realistic and attainable metrics, you will see our comments that some are just not ambitious enough. And if we really want to see improvement at the end of the year, we've got to set higher standards. Furthermore, newer items in the LCAP like safe haven, ethnic studies, expanded learning, and goal four, there is a lot of ambiguity, even incomplete, in terms of the metrics and the indicators. You will see our questions and concerns in those areas, and hopefully the final versions will have more, have clearer and more specific details how those outcomes and metrics will be developed over the next three years. And lastly, just to reiterate the past comments made in the previous board meetings, that the LCAP process needed to be improved. We have some veteran PAC members who can really provide feedback on how can we set parents up for success for future committee members. And so that way, they could fully participate and give you informed recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
We decided to kind of biggy back our comments, and I am continuing with that process of talking about, as an LCAP member in the Black Parallel School Board, how we have moved through the process, and for us, some things that we're missing at times, and conversations that were cut short, and looking at the process in terms of seasons, and looking at the recommendations from CCEE in terms of how that should look with the parent PAC. I think it was most eloquently said earlier from D-LAC, is that, you know, there needs to be more involvement coming to, and a gentleman who was on the PAC in the first year with the LCAP, in the fact that the parents need to be engaged where they're at. You want more involvement from the parents, you want more engagement, more understanding. There needs to be more learning at the beginning, needs to be more understanding for the parents of how important this is. I think a lot of parents don't understand how important our voices are in doing this, and how important this body is to sit on. But the parents aren't engaged where they're at, in the sites where they're at, in their communities where they're at, in languages where they're at. To be able to come and bring parents who have vital information and may be working in the school sites but may not sit on a school site council, may not sit on PTA or anywhere else that they're able to get this information. So I want to make sure that you're very aware that while we have a gambit of individuals in this path this year who can share a wealth of knowledge, I think each of us were chosen for our bounty of knowledge, for where we come from, from our perspectives. But we're not always able to give you that because we're missing budgets, we're missing comments, we're missing things that we can't comment on later because pieces of the LCAP, the LCAP are missing. So I hope in the future, as we move forward, that there continues to be improvement and alignment for us as well.
Thank you. Any other comment, public comments?
No more public comment.
Member Minnick?
Thank you. First, to respond partially to Ms. Tinker's comment, as, as you know, I mentioned at a previous meeting that I'd like to do an ad hoc committee with, with Member Wang and, and you, and I've talked to a couple of other committee members to look at the structure of how we, how we implement the LCAP Committee timelines, all that kind of stuff, to make sure it's as effective as possible, that we're, we're doing this not just the way we have to by law, but, but the way that's going to have the most impact and, and have as much student voice and have as much community input as possible. So probably shortly after the 28th, when maybe things will slow down a little, and you're trying to be somewhat respectful of your, your time, in the beginning of July, though, I'll connect with you to set up maybe an initial meeting. I had a couple questions. One, Kathy, you mentioned, I thought, on one of these slides, the amount of feedback you got through the survey from students. But then on this chart, there is no mention of students. And is it because the percentage was so small that it doesn't fit on the circle?
Two different surveys, actually. So we gather feedback to inform the LCAP and to inform district priorities in many different ways. So we had, and it, timing was compressed, which wasn't the best timing upon reflection. Our school climate survey focuses on three main stakeholder groups, students, parents, and teachers. And then we had an LCAP feedback survey that anyone was welcome to take, but I don't know that it had as much interest in our community. We have lower numbers in the LCAP, particularly around students.
It wasn't targeted towards students, that, that survey you're talking about, that second one?
It's difficult to say, probably not targeted to students.
Right. Well, and I just, and I mean, this is going to be a thing that, you know, we'll, we'll talk about later, just because I don't want to downplay the importance of that, that, that youth piece. And, and, you know, and so then when I see that chart, and then there's no students listed anywhere, like, my first reaction is like, did we just ignore it? Like, you know, whatever. And, and thanks for clarifying, but I think that's important, that even, even if we are utilizing it, we need to make sure we showcase when we're using it so that, so that students know that we value their input, if in fact we do, which I believe we do. Then my other question is around the final submission to us of the LCAP plan. I thought if I understood you, Elliot, correctly, that we would receive that on June 28th. And so, so tonight, for example, we received like this stuff, you know, I think yesterday, and, and these indicators, like, while I was sitting up here. And so clearly, like, I haven't read any of it, so I couldn't really formulate thoughts or questions, and it's kind of like I'm just getting this, like, brand-new information, which means that the public is also not getting this ahead of time, which means that people who might want to come and comment on it aren't, aren't getting it. And so I want to figure out when we're actually going to see that final version of the, of the, the final draft of that, meaning, when I say we, I mean us, I mean the public, everybody, so that there's enough time for folks. Because ultimately, this is supposed to guide our decision-making when we vote on the budget on the 28th. If I get this 10 minutes before, I can't utilize the community's voice at all. And then the community is stuck with just what I think. And that seems unfair. So I just want to, I want to nail down when we're going to have that so that, so that we and everybody in the community has a chance to speak on it.
So I'll clarify, it's in stages. And so we have posted online the first draft, and for those who took the LCAP survey, it was linked in the survey, so you could look at the whole document. It's right now 96 pages. And so we will post our revised, our second draft tomorrow. We, for the, sorry, it's late, for the public hearing on June 15th, that's our next milestone, public hearing at the board meeting. And we will post the LCAP draft on the Friday with the board packet. So that's the, you know, official exposure to the public. Additionally, our staff would like to have the opportunity to sit down with board members. We've done that in the past. It's a challenging document, and we'd be happy to talk through it with board members as well. So, I mean, that's an option. June 28th is the, the special board meeting at which, by statute, the LCAP and the budget are adopted together. So I totally agree. By that point, you should be familiar with, we can help you become familiar with what's included.
So potentially, the, the draft that we receive in the board packet, you know, a week, a week from Friday, will be as close to the final draft as possible.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Pending board advice.
Right, right. Okay. Thanks.
Bridgette?
That was actually going to be one of the questions that I asked, so I guess I'll just kind of go into a little plug because SHINE came and presented. And I don't know if you remember, but last year, we were able to extend that program by two schools, I think it was, within the budget. SHINE has been so instrumental in our schools. For a long time, we had the initiative of the Men's Leadership Academy, and I remember sitting here with the Dream, with Member Rodriguez, when she was here, talking about, we need something for girls. We need to show them how to be, how to empower themselves, tell them about self-awareness. And then, I don't know if you got what they sent, that they passed out, I'll share it with you. But, I mean, some of the things that I underlined were like decrease in behavior problems, significant positive climate, growth in areas of responsibility, communication, and respect, improved self-awareness, and that SHINE participants feel supported and happier because the program had engaged them, whereas they previously didn't feel connected to their school. This came from our administrators. This wasn't from the, from SHINE. These were comments directly from our administrators. So when we go forth on creating, you know, these budgets, we really need to think about programs like this, because, you know, when we talk about foster youth, foster youth is probably one of the biggest, I don't, I'm at a loss for words because it's too late, but they, they probably have a lot of trafficking within that system because of where they're at, right? Well, SHINE is a program that can help catch these girls at an early age, teaching the self-awareness and catching them before they go off into that type of world. So I really want us to just think about these type of programs and how we can help support them and help them grow this coming year.
Thank you.
Be mindful of the clock. What is the pleasure of my colleagues now that it is 11:30, when that's the time to which we extended and which we're going to adjourn? Those in favor of extending till midnight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? Abstentions? Thank you. I have one last comment before you're excused. Thank you. I want to suggest to my colleague Minnick and Wang, when they create the ad hoc committee to talk about the LCAP, that we consider drafting LCAP committee members either in the winter or in the spring. And then I want to consider, once they're drafted, to have an education program for them, so that they understand what the LCAP committee is supposed to do, walk with them the older budget so they know what to look forward to moving forward, so they can be more fully engaged in their responsibilities as they help us serve our clients. So that's my suggestion to you, and I hope that that will be implemented next year. The earlier that we can get started on the new committee, even though we're still doing the budget, I think will enhance and improve participation. Thank you.
And we also hope we'll have members who stay for a second year, so that helps us with the institutional memory.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11.4, Governors May Revis. Rardo. I hope you have some exciting news. I know you don't, but, no. What does the governor tell us?
Good evening, Vice President Wood, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. Tonight, Ms. Gloria Chan and I will present an update on the Governors May Revise Budget. Our goal is to inform you that Our goal is to inform you of the changes from the Governor's January proposal that we present to you in February, excuse me, during our budget workshop. As a reminder, we will use the information received during the May revise to create a budget for 2017-18. And the largest parts of the district revenues are from the local control funding formula. And therefore, we will review it in more detail. The LCF is still considered a new funding model, starting in 2013-14, after 40-plus years of being funded under the revenue limit. The promises of the local control funding formula were restore the purchasing power of 2017-8. The distribution of funding among school districts to target students in closed achievement gap. This is one of the reasons that LCAP was created. And number three is greater local control over programs and resources. We no longer have 42 different categorical programs. After three completed years, we now know that due to the increases in CalPERS, in pension costs, and STIRS, and increases such as special education and transportation, it means that purchasing power will not be restored. And this graph shows that. And the red dotted line shows the actual purchasing power, and the orange line shows our funding. For about every dollar that our district receives, about 25 cents will go towards pension costs. You may not think the increases are not significant since our payroll is so high, that increases in pension costs takes about 25 cents or every dollar. What were the themes from the governors in the, from the May revise? He say, "A void of new ongoing commitments." He even talked about he did not want to return to practice or prior administrations in which new programs were added during good times, but had to rack pull out from people receiving these services when the economy turned down. The governors' budget education provides some good news. It provides a little increase in COLA from 1.0 to 1.56%. If you hear the, if you read a newspaper, the news when the governor released your budget, you would think they were significant good news. However, the majority of the one-time funds will not be paid to the districts until May 2019. The 2019 is not a typo, that is about two years from now. Ms. Gloria Chan will discuss this in more details on her slides. We have several programs such as special ed, transportation, child nutrition, and even child development, who will receive only the COLA increase. That is from, an increase from 1.48% in the January to 1.56% increase. This increase does not even cover the additional costs that we have in these programs. These programs continue to increase year after year, and the revenue has not catch up. We are, cannot catch up. What is our funding, our funding for 2017-18? Under the GRACE Plan, this will be our funding raise. Each gray level has different funding raise. GSA stands for GRACE Pen. This used to be the formal class size, formal class size reduction. Local control funding formula, one of the, we had to plan the local control funding formula target is funded at 97% already. So by year 2021, it will reach the 100%. So we already, we have three years to go, and it's already targeted at 97%. This is one of the reasons we need to plan. It's almost, then the purchasing power will not reach to that level. They was promised back when it was approved in 2013-14.
Good evening, Vice President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. As Geraldo mentioned, we're at 97% of full implementation. As you can see on our chart, we have had large gaps, large jumps, and increased funding for the first five years. Though with only 3% to go over the next three years, that averages 1% per year. So what that means to our district is that we'll get smaller increases, yet our costs will continue to climb. So we are going to feel the pressures. Think of it's like buying a car. When gas prices are low, you're going to get a good car, and you don't care so much about the, how much miles per gallon that you get. But when the gas prices start to rise again, you're going to feel the pressure of having to pay more to fill that, to fill your car. And then you have to adjust somewhere else in your budget to make your paycheck work. Some other areas where we will feel the cost pressure is in career and technical education. When the May revise did not provide any additional funds in this area, it did fund the final installment of the Career and Technical Education Incentive Grant. Afterwards, districts must use our LCFF funds to maintain the program going forward. For us, that is about $2.8 million. As mentioned before, the May revise increased our per ADA dollar for one-time monies from 48 to 173. But unfortunately, conditions were added. We will not be paid until May of 2019. And this is only if the state meets its target revenues. Also, in the May of 2019, we'll have a new governor. Because of these conditions, we cannot count on this money and will not include it in our 2017-18 budget. What does this mean for our district? Between the January budget and the May revise, our LCFF revenue went up by 0.6 million, but we lost the one-time guaranteed dollars of 1.8 million. Our overall anticipated revenues dropped by 1.2 million. We came out worse with the May revise because of the loss of the one-time dollars. Other items are missing in the state budget. There is no new funding to address the increased employer contributions to CalSTRS and CalPERS. There's no new funding for transportation or special ed. As Kathy and Elliot has mentioned in the prior presentation, the new LCAP template will be for three years. And the budget, the LCAP, and the strategic plan must align. The three legs of our stool must work together to be grounded and stable. Our 2017-18 budget will be based on the Governor's May revise, and we will continue to monitor the state budget and its impact on our finances. We will also continue to follow the LCAP process. Our public hearing for the 2017-18 budget adoption is June 15th, and the final budget adoption is June 28th. What have we learned? The California economy is, and always has been, cyclical. Nine years ago, we had a booming economy. Did the district have an adequate plan for the Great Recession? Do we have a plan now for the upcoming recession as costs continues to increase? Or will our students bear the burden? Thank you. Questions?
Any public comment?
We have Darlene, are you still here? I think Darlene's gone.
She said, "Good night."
Liz Guillen?
Good evening. Vice President Wu and Superintendent Banda. I'm Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. I think that there, for me, there were some reactions that I had to the May revision presentation. It isn't looking good, that's true, but it's also not at all clear what's going to come out of the final budget. Even in conference committee, there are some hopeful signs. However, I don't blame Geraldo for being cautious. But I do want to suggest that, at the time that the LCAP and the budget are adopted, the district will know what the adopted budget or what the state budget looks like. We'll have gone beyond our knowledge of the May revise. And so at that time, I think it would be really transparent for the district to say, you know, what the impact of that was and whether or not there will need to be a revision, which is allowed by state law, of your adopted budget within, what, 45 days or something?
Yeah, we could do that. We have, we have 45 days to revise it. So we go, we will mention if something changes from, we had to take a point in time in order to finish our processes. And then after that, something changes, we will, it is material, we will mention that.
Because it seems like there were a lot of hopes for that contingent funding that may not come to pass, the one-time funding. But if it does and other funding becomes available, that's something that should be considered against the LCAP and your plans. And so I would suggest keeping that open for the future. Thank you.
Ms. Bridgette?
Yeah. Okay, so I have some questions. First off, can you tell me, under page 15, for the ethnic studies implementation, does this mean that it's going to actually be funded out of the general fund? Or is it, because it's my understanding that currently it's under Stacy Al, or Dr. Al's Department Now, which is grant-funded. So is that going to change, or how has it been in the past?
So your question is that ethnic studies?
The ethnic studies. Like, how was it funded before, and then what does this mean in here?
So it was funded through the, through the local control funding formula, for the supplemental concentration. And since that time, we were thinking, we were planning that it was a three-year increments increase that. So we will be part of the same, the same continuation of funding.
Okay. Where does this leave us in here with positions that we would like to add, like counselors and?
So this presentation was, we will, it will be part of the LCAP, the input that we will take that in, that will come at the next, at the next meeting. Back in February, we discussed the whole budget process. This presentation was not about the actual budget, but just about the changes from, about the governor's budget in May. So I don't have that economy.
Okay, but you'll bring that to us on the?
Yeah, that will be on the, on the June 15th.
Okay.
That will be, so that will be that's when it's?
You're going to give us time to review and stuff before we go to the 28th meeting, correct?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a two process. So that's where we, at that point in time, if there's some changes, there's another priorities versus, we will try to describe that. It's, we could not describe every single item, but we will be able to cover those major points that we discussed throughout the year and through the LCAP process. And then it's adopted at the, at the June 28th. And even after that, you know, the budget could be revised. We need to, we discussed that during the budget committee, you know, the process.
So on my five years sitting on this board now, it seems like every time there's the budget, we always kind of hear that same story about if you buy a car, and that whole story that you gave. I've heard that for like the last five years. And we always have a surplus, it seems like, at least since I've been on the board. We've had a surplus. So it's, maybe it was kind of a play on words, but it just kind of bothers me that every year we hear that same story, but then we end up with a surplus. And so, well, I'm sure that, are we going to see a surplus? When we, when we see the budget?
We're going to be, we're going to be, we are projecting a deficit for the next year.
Even with the one-time funding?
And the one-time funding, as we mentioned, is not, we're not going to count that because it's going to become until May 2019. Those increases in pension costs are catching up with us. You know, during the last three years, the governor paid a lot of one-time funds so we can have some, some funds.
Maybe I'm not quite understanding. I mean, you and I should probably talk offline prior to the June 15th meeting so that way I fully understand. So the one-time funding, I know that you said in your presentation that, that we won't get the one-time funding. Well, it was one-time funding, so it would be called two-time funding, if we got it again, right? So, but I guess one of my questions, you know, we have this money right now set aside that we received for this one-time funding. And tonight, we had a crowd full of people here in regards to the expanded learning programs. So my question to you, Geraldo, is that can we possibly use the one-time fundings to fund these programs for this coming year until we can figure things out for the following year?
So the answer is yes, yes, we can. It's a matter of, of what decisions we do. You know, we could do that, but we cannot do everything. We just had to realize the work, raise the policy as to what, what consequences our decisions have. Vice President Wu discussed today his comments with that, the federal budget, you know, something about like about 10% of revenue is also decreasing. You know, for many years, that's something that we were, it was stable. We were not, it changed a little bit based on the demographics of our district and the census data. But now, you're pushing about big cuts. It's a, it's still a proposal, you know, it's not, it's not final, but we just need to prepare, prepare for that. And we have had some, many times since I've been in the district, some, sometimes some big cuts in this district, you know, when, you know, COVID stuff. You know, we have been very fortunate these last three, three years, four, four years now. But it's a cycle that comes to that. And we just need to be prepared, that's my opinion.
Sure, and I want to be fiscally sound to make sure that we're protecting ourselves. I guess the thing that kind of bothers me a little bit is that we've received these one-time funds and we're kind of holding on to them. And in my mind, they should be, for the majority, they should be spent on the students that we got the money for and not held off. And I'm not saying spend it completely down and put us at risk for future years. I'm just saying that, because right now, it looks like we're in a very, a very good place fiscally.
For next year?
And then we're cutting programs.
For next year, at this point in time, we are projecting a deficit of $12 million. That means we need a reserve. Many districts are not, are cutting programs throughout the state. They're not having increases because, you know, the state has finished paying more, more of his, the wall of debt that the governor used to, that was the school district.
Okay, I'll reach out to you offline before the 15th meeting to kind of go over it so that way I fully understand as well. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Geraldo. Thank you. Thank you, Gloria. Moving on to item 11.5, Approval of Facilities Committee Recommendation for CB Wire. Ms. Allen? Ms. Allen, you're still here?
And I'm, I think I'm awake. So very quickly, just wanted to report out from a facilities committee meeting a week ago, where the committee discussed the possible tenants over at CB Wire. We did an RFP, and we received five proposals. The committee reviewed those proposals and made a recommendation to, recommend to the full board to let Asian Resources be what we're calling? full board to let Asian Resources be what we're calling the anchor tenant over at CB Wire. They are requesting about 9,041 square feet, mostly the front part of the site there. However, there was interest from some other nonprofits as well, and so the desire is to potentially create something along the lines of a law familiar over at Maple or Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, where there would be more than one nonprofit operating out of that site. So what is for you tonight is to either approve the facilities committee recommendation, and certainly ask Members Pritchett and Minnick to comment on the meeting, and then give, I have about, what, a week left to negotiate a license agreement with them, and bring that back to you for your consideration on June 15.
Okay, what's the committee's recommendation?
Sorry, the committee's recommendation is to accept the proposal.
Mr. Barrios, are there any public comment?
No public comment.
This is an action item. I would entertain a motion. And I have a motion and a second from the committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close. Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 11.6, revision of Board Policy 1312.3, Uniform Complaint Procedures. Ms. Villegas and Mr. Oseo, are you still here? There you are. This is the first reading, I'll make that point.
Good evening, Vice President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and board members. My name is Christina Villegas, Human Resources Director, and tonight, we're coming before you to present to you required changes to our current board policy involving Uniform Complaint Procedures, also known as UCP. The UCP complaint are those that allege unlawful discrimination and violation of state or federal laws governing educational programs, pupil fees, and the local control accountability plan, also known as the LCAP. Okay. So for the Board Policy 1312.3, these are the additions. We are going to be adding 15 new programs to the UCP policy per requirements from the California Department of Education's Federal Program Monitoring, also known as FPM. Secondly, we are adding specific remedies to conclusions of the complaints that fall under pupil fees, LCAP, and pupil course, period without educational content, including guidelines on the implementation of the remedies. There are no costs associated with this revision. The goal of the revision is to bring the UCP policy in line with the CDE requirements and to ensure rights of individuals that raise particular types of complaints. The LCAP goals met by this revision are safe, emotionally healthy, and engaged students, and operational excellence. As this is the first reading, we are requesting the board to take action and approve this item number 11.6 at the next board meeting taking place June 15. At that time, the website, annual employee notification, and parent notifications will be revised. And that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Are there any public comment? Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues? Thank you. We look forward to seeing you on June 15.
Thank you.
Any employee organizations seeking to communicate, as CTA has already done so? Seeing none, moving on to district parent advisory committees. There any district parent advisory committees? DLEC has already reported. Thank you. I think that, given the late hour, I'm going to exercise the authority unless there's a member. Rosas, would you like to make a statement or make a report?
Thank you. I just have something really, really short. I just wanted to thank Sarah, Sarah Nguyen. She will be the next student school board member, and she's being an excellent trooper. She's shadowing me today. Sorry, it's going on so late. But SAC has began shadowing and training with next year's board, and we're really excited. We're getting to know them and making sure that they have a good foundation to start with for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. We'll see you next time. Are there any board members who'd like to share anything? Any, we will suspend the committee reports. We'll receive the information about 13.1 and 13.2 regarding business and financials, as well as head start and early head start reports. And I'll announce item 14.0. June 15 is the next board meeting, beginning at 4:30. Closed session, 6:30 open session, followed by June 28 at 6:30 only as an open session, which will be a special budget workshop meeting. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by aye. We are adjourned.